Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Select Board Meeting for Monday, March 10. We'll start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have reading in the mail. So the one I have online is different than this, which is...
There was two versions online.
I'm in the right spot. Sorry. Give me one second. Here at the end, it makes a big difference. We're going to hear from our legislative delegation. We have a 7:00 public hearing on a liquor license for N G North. Then we'll have public input, Select Board discussions about three articles for the Disability Commission, discussing the Orchard Lease and IMA with Acton for a public health nurse, and talked about MAPC and the magic organizations. Then we'll go into 8:15, we'll do town meeting update, Human Resources Bylaw, discussion on 37 Shattuck Street, and the general town meeting. 8:30 we'll do minutes, and we'll adjourn promptly at 8:35. So you want to start with the mail? Please hold.
This hour of losing sleep is really getting everybody.
So sorry.
Want me to jump in? Vacancies on town boards? Vacancies on town boards. It's usual.
Current vacancies for the Board, Agricultural Commission, Conservation, Cultural Council, Economic Development Committee, Historical Commission, Master Plan Implementation Committee, Permanent Municipal Building Committee, Zoning Board of Appeals, and one appointment by the School Committee for their Finance Committee, for the Finance Committee. Sign up to receive public notifications for the Town of Littleton. www.littletonma.org/subscribe. Community impacts, public safety activity, town meeting changes, transportation issues, public health concerns, town events, stay informed. We have a gift acceptance form, the gift afternoons from Lowell Five for $1,500 to EHS COA for the TRED Fund, tax relief for the elderly and disabled fund. Thank you Lowell Five. And another one from Lowell Five to Pox and Rec, Pox and Rec Community Education, same amount of $1,500 as a donation to the Youth Scholarship Fund. Here we have a thank you note, email from the very first recipient of the grant for the small grant that will help, that helps people up to $7,500 to help on some emergency things. And here, as you can see, this one was a result of a deteriorating furnace and AC after performing manual maintenance. So it was fantastic they were able to help out, and the woman just wanted to express her sincere appreciation and recognizing the fantastic team we have at EHS. Littleton Robotics, they had a heck of a weekend. They were able to bring another banner home. And with that, more importantly, the students and the coaches were in a great headspace and teamwork, camaraderie, smiles, and positive energy, seemed to be working right that night, which is absolutely fantastic. So much appreciated. And they've got a few very impressive, some very, look at the crowd. I mean, the crowd is enormous. And very impressive things that occurred. And there is the winning machine.
I think they're running out of wall space for the banners not by now, aren't they?
Yeah, yeah, no kidding, huh? That's right. And that's okay. That's a good problem to have. Here is a notice for a public hearing for the middle school tennis courts and the Wickham baseball field. And this is for the planning board for a public hearing on Thursday, March 13 at 7:00 PM, Room 103 on Shattuck Street Town Offices. And we have another gift acceptance to EHS Council on Aging, another very generous offer by the Rotary Club of Littleton, the amount of $10,000, naming of a conference room in the new building to go to the new building gift fund, room naming. Outstanding. Very appreciative. And there we are, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Thank you. So I'd like to turn it over to our Senator and Representative to give a legislative update. And thank you for coming.
Yes, so thank you so much to the Chair, to the Select Board, to the Town Administrator and Assistant Town Administrator for having us. Great to see you all, nice annual tradition. And I was just saying to Rep. Parciaro that Saturday morning I had my Green Advisory Council meeting in the conference room just down the hall. So it's just such a beautiful library, and people really love this space, not only in Littleton, but people come from all over, often with remote work and things. So great to be here. And it was great to see the senior center making a lot of progress. And thanks to Ryan Ferrera updating me about the progress on the solar panels, which Rep. Parciaro had secured that earmark last year. So that's really encouraging. And I know Town Minister Jim Duggan has also given us the timeline around the groundbreaking for 550 King Street, and really great to see the progress made on that. And just wanted to give a few snapshots on the budget front. The Governor, of course, has proposed her budget. And so just so you have a sense of the proposed increases, though I usually, the legislature does better than the Governor's numbers. But for FY '25, so last year, what Littleton got for Chapter 70 was $5,191,000. And the Governor's proposal is $5,139,175. So fairly modest increase. I would say probably for communities like Littleton, really the biggest difference that can be made around the schools is minimum aid per pupil. So her budget, part of the reason there's that increase is $75 per pupil. So that's, you know, across the board for any school district. So my understanding is the MMA, and many, obviously municipal officials are pushing for $150 per pupil. Revenues are generally good, but not great. So I hope we can get to that. And then on the unrestricted general government aid, I'll go, last year, the town received $875,266, and the Governor's proposal is $894,522. So again, a modest increase. I don't know if there'll be a greater increase around unrestricted local aid. I would see probably the, what I'm hearing the most in terms of organizing is the education aid increase, because we know there's so many communities in this area that have, you know, had to pass overrides or have budget cuts. So that's sort of, you know, my sense of where we're at with respect to the budget. And I think that's about all I have. I think there was a question that we both got about remote meetings, which that law does expire later this month. So I do feel confident we will extend it. My guess is that we will continue to allow for the hybrid option. So it could be in-person and remote, but we won't make it mandatory, because some of the smaller communities, or communities have just said, look, we've got, you know, and Littleton is one of them, we've got 50 committees, you know, we can't guarantee that each one would be, would have the technology to be both remote and in-person. So my guess is we'll continue the current law, which allows it to be an option of hybrid and in-person, but not to make it mandatory. But the bottom line is, we need to continue it. And I know with the scheduling that towns have, you know, we really need to do it soon. So thanks for the question on that, and looking forward to other questions after my friend and colleague's presentation.
Thank you, Senator. And to sort of jump off on what the Senator was talking about as well. So in January, the Governor filed her $56 billion budget. Now we are anticipating April 16 for our budget to be released in the House, which I always say, you know, at the beginning of the process, very often the executive is going to put sort of more of a, I'm not going to say a political spin, but it's usually the direction of where the executive branch is looking to do and how they're going to fund that. But the House and the Senate certainly will be, you know, the kind of final say on things moving forward. Couple of very important pieces to talk about when it comes to the economy, because I understand certainly municipal budgets, it's been difficult. Inflation has been something that everybody's dealing with, with goods and services. But certainly we've, I know there was failed overrides in a lot of the regions. I know towns that I represent try to have that. But our revenues are looking stronger this last two months. The Senator touched on that. And we're about 6% better than we were in our benchmark in February than last fiscal year. So things are moving in the right direction. Certainly, when it gets a little bit closer, I always ask the Select Board before the House budget does come out, additional priorities on the smaller end, earmarks that we've been successful with over the last, well, over the last decade that we've been working together. And a few I'd like to bring your attention to, once is congratulations to Littleton for the million-dollar Housing Works Grant that you were able to get for King Street. That's going to go very far, as we've seen a lot of investments of the town, as well as the state, into that project moving forward. So we're very happy with that. And the Senator and I were very intimately involved in that, through that process as well, to make sure it was, it came into fruition. Secondly, Shaker Lane Elementary School. The Senator and I lended our support to that, to the school building authority. And as you've kind of been informed as well, it was approved by the preferred school design. So we're moving forward in the right direction. Another few things is, I think some things to announce to the Town of Littleton is the Senator and I have changed committees. I'm now going to be chairing the Transportation Committee in the House, which is very intimidating, I will say. Four years ago...
119 needs your help.
That's, yeah, thank you. And so four years ago during the pandemic, I became the Housing Chair. And that was, I feel is going to be similar to transportation and drinking from a fire hose with information. But we do anticipate an $8.2 billion transportation bond this session. And that's going to make huge investments over 10 years with, obviously, the commuter rail, MTA, but regional transit authorities, as well as roads and bridge repair across the state. On top of that, the Chapter 90 Bond Bill, we're most likely going to be voting on, usually in the beginning of April. That's about, I think that's $1.8 billion, I think I'd put that down. And that will change too. But the initial, the initial investment is about $1.5 billion. And in that, there will be, obviously, local ways, roads and bridge repair locally for the cities and towns across the state, as well as sidewalks and other municipal improvements and, you know, enhancements that we have looking forward. So the Municipal Empowerment Act, I think is something the Senator touched on a little bit. That is something that the Governor had filed to allow cities and towns to find ways to make ends meet. I know there'll be a debate on hotels and meals tax to be able to have, you know, town meetings and municipal boards weigh in and change that for whatever investments or, you know, investments in the community are looking to do. But we feel as though that's, that's really going to take shape as we move forward in this legislative session. The MMA has supported, been very supportive of it, and has a number of briefings on it. But we anticipate, I believe, would be municipal affairs or local affairs. That would be, hearing that bill, and I'm sure that the emails and MMA and municipal government folks and leaders are going to be weighing in on that as it gets closer.
And I was going to add, the Revenue Committee might hear some of that, too.
That's now, that was my segue. The Senator didn't take it. But here he is. The Senator's going to be dealing on revenue issues. So they're all making a stop at the Senator's Committee at some point.
Thanks so much.
Yeah, congratulations. Thank you.
What is the deal with the legislative audit? Like, what is going on?
Well, so there's a ballot initiative, 72% of the people voted for it. And what we had before us, and I know the House and the Senate had a couple of serious questions. One is legally, right, constitutionally, the separation of powers issue. So what the House did, and the Senate had a different approach, but I think it's kind of getting at the same thing, is we said 72% of the people in Massachusetts voted for this, we support the audit. However, what we felt, because of some of the politics that's played out in the newspapers and, you know, blogs, et cetera, social media platforms, is the Speaker and a unanimous vote by legislators was to allow the auditor to pick an independent audit to audit the legislature. So as of right now, it doesn't play well politically, but we're audited every year by a defended auditor, the legislature is. So we said, okay, we understand this is getting somewhat political, and we want to respect the voters. So we will allow, that's the order that was passed as part of our rules package in the House, was to allow the auditor to audit the legislature, to pick an independent auditor to perform that task. That's where we're at. And the Senate had a little bit of a different approach, but the constitutional issues, I think, were ever present as well.
Right. And I think the thing, Matt, is that, you know, I think most people, when they think of an audit, you know, they go financial audit, which I do think the legislature is comfortable with. The question is to what Representative Parciaro said, is that the constitutional issue is not only a separation of powers, but what actually, you know, how would you audit the legislative decisions to, you know, report out a certain bill or why someone gets a certain committee? It's really kind of impossible. The auditor, while I do support her effort to do a financial audit, she has said at different times that she wanted to go further than that, you know, audit other aspects of the legislature that really get into legislative, you know, decision-making. So I think that is the concern from a constitutional separation of powers point of view.
And I think our point has always been that, you know, since we've been members of the legislature, I've been a member of the legislature for 17 years, we're audited independently every year. All of our numbers are on the website. And there are ways to do that if it is truly, you know, and we understand that, and things can change and morph as they move forward. But I think we've both been supportive of the financial audit and have questions about the constitutionality of them, as well as the separation of powers, as our Attorney General has had the same questions and, you know, concerns.
So there was no information anywhere that I recall seeing, even in the ballot question, that it was not anything but a financial audit? This is the first I'm hearing about that.
Yeah, it's...
So that was like, not clear, I think, to the voters, that it was, I just assumed it was a financial audit.
Right. I think it was part of it, though, Matt. I think that, I think the issue was, it was part of it. And I think, to the Senator's point, I think the Speaker and the Senate President both said, how can you audit my decision-making on what I'm thinking?
That makes complete sense to me.
And why people have committees. They're going to have to audit why we have the chairmanships we do. And we could be in trouble. But no, but ultimately, we both agree on the financial piece. But as legislators, you know, we do have an obligation to uphold the Constitution. So we certainly can't move forward on things like that without getting some clear and concise understanding of what we're doing.
So I think you said something Saturday about some changes in the transparency rules that Mike...
Oh, yeah.
Do you want to?
Yeah, please.
Yeah, that's really where it appears, you know, that the House and Senate largely agree on things. The House, as is the case for, you know, any sort of bill passing, you know, the House passes a version, the Senate passes, and now it's a conference committee. But where we are in agreement is that all committee votes by committees, by legislative committees, would be public. And I think also that the House or Senate members could report out bills to the House or Senate, of House or Senate bills. So I think the House and Senate are both in agreement on that.
Right.
There's, I think there's some difference of opinion about, like, attending, taking attendance on committees, and when there would be a deadline for report out bills. But I will say, I think there is a sense from the legislature that we do need to take action on more bills every session and have them during the formal session, and not, you know, past the typical end of July through the first deadline.
And that was one of the sort of criticisms of legislature over the years. We're not transparent, because you couldn't see the bills online. And, you know, obviously, we do the best we can, but we can always be better, right? And so these were huge strides, that the rules, that the rules packages that we passed in both branches. Also, to report out bills within 60 days. That is something that very often as Chairs, when you're sort of triaging so many bills, and you're not able to debate and bring up every one of them at once, they're parked in committees for a period of time until you move them out. That's not going to happen. We're going to have more of a sort of a free-flowing, if you will, of legislation, moving that forward into committees to do a better assessment of their lifespan. And secondly, I think we had the other question about rules was attendance, too. And I think to ensure that, you know, we preserve the integrity of the institution, but also return, you know, have the respect to our constituents, to understand that will we be attending the hearings? You can find out we're there, and you can find out the bills we vote on, because that's just basics.
Any updates on the Shoba Valley and the request for additional funding from the Governor? Or do you have a sense of how much longer we'll be waiting on that?
Yeah, we had, the legislative delegation, including the two of us, had a meeting with the Governor's senior team, because I think if there was to be any money, just first to operate any money, that would be in the FY '26 budget. So we're, you know, we're still waiting to see the Governor's response. You know, obviously, the House and Senate could take action in our upcoming budgets. So that's something I know we've been advocating for. No, just speaking on the Senate side, no commitments yet, but we did have a good, I had a good meeting with Chairman Lodrick to discuss it. And then there's really, I mean, I think it's, I really do think it's pretty close, but I do really think that UMass Memorial is interested to bring back a hospital, to buy the building at the Shoba Valley Medical Center, and not just the ER facility that they proposed. The question is the cost, and will the Healy Driscoll Administration work with UMass Memorial to make that financially possible? And the challenge has been is that, as bad as Stewart Healthcare was, you know, the owner now of that property and heir is the Apollo Medical Properties, and they're apparently, you know, just as bad as far as what they're asking for, for the money for it. So I think the question is, and we are working on a letter, asking the Governor to take more aggressive action, is, you know, can the state, just as they did quite honestly with other hospitals, you know, provide some capital funding to make this deal work? So that's where we're at right now. And I think, I don't know about, I can't speak, obviously, for this Select Board, but I think other town Select Boards are now sending letters in to that effect, to the Governor.
And shout out to Steel McCurdy, too, your Fire Chief, who has kind of led the charge in this region. We had that recent meeting. And of course, I think for the edification of people, I think we're talking about the $9 million that we were talking about, 9.6. So, and that money would go to sort of helping the staffing and, you know, the sort of all the repercussions of having to bring people for healthcare a little bit farther and longer and more work, and the pieces that go to that.
Yeah, thank you. And congratulations on your appointments, I think.
Yes.
Thank you.
Everything, right, everything, too.
Just back to the long-term plan. Is there a long-term plan for the hybrid option? I know we keep doing the extensions, it makes sense. But I'm assuming it's somewhere in here, there'll have to be a budget to help. A lot of the communities don't have the bandwidth, no contented, or to help in other communities like us that want to do more. But we're limited as well by a lot of the...
Right. I mean, my prediction is that what will become permanent is that it's permanent that a city or town can offer, you know, a hybrid, you know, that a meeting can be in-person and remote, or just in-person. Because there are, especially as you go further west, communities are saying, we can't realistically provide hybrid. I'd like to say, you know, there'd be money for technology for all the towns, but even if there was, some of these western best towns don't even have internet yet.
Right. Well, I, you know, and to that point, I think everybody here knows, like, especially if you were, you know, elected or you worked in the public space during the pandemic, there are best practices that you guys have seen that work better, certainly in the other towns I represent, and you feel the same way. There's probably been the most support and the most momentum to do something in this, in this space in a long time. Well, I'm not going to say a long time, the last couple of years. We've kind of kicked it down the road, and we've extended it a little bit. But I think this time, more than ever, the Municipal Empowerment Act that the Governor supports, it might even be beneficial to members of this Board to testify on that, on that bill, and things that you've seen that work. And I think it's all very important. And we can, you know, share with you those dates when they come closer. The bill is House Dock at 4360, in case you want to know what that bill and take a look at it. And be happy to send, the MMA has a really good analysis of it as well, that's on their website, that talks a lot about stuff. And that stuff's going to change, you know that. But it's, it's all part of that conversation. So to your point, Gary, and I agree with the Senator, I think there's going to be some sort of a version of that.
The only other thing I have is, on your committee, did Complete Streets come out of your committee? Where did that originate?
Well, the grant program, I think the administration administered it. But it was a program, it wasn't a budget. It wasn't, it wasn't like a bill, per se. It could have been in the past. But that would be administered through the administration, through a grant program.
I will pass to you on that.
One last, well, if there's one last thing I wanted to touch base on, it was something the Senator and I were talking about before we came in here. And on the Economic Development Bill, we got a couple of earmarks in there that might get a little, you know, it gets a little, you know, certainly when you have a five-year economic development bond bill, the money has to be released by the administration in order for that to happen. My staff recently met with the economic development team in the Governor's Office, and were kind of directed to a couple of different options. So just so we know here, we have the, the Senator and I secured the PFAS mitigation and remediation in Littleton for $2 million. That's an earmark in the economic development bill that we, that we received. And also, $60,000 for the Littleton Commonwealth Revitalization Roadmap Update. And so those two pieces were things that we got in the economic development bill. But we're actively trying to find other avenues to release that money, because sometimes a lot of this stuff bottlenecks when you have 160 reps and 40 senators that all want their earmarks out. So we were going to currently look to figure out different avenues to get some of these. And it's possible through grants.
Everybody's pretty much touched on everything. Again, congratulations. But something I was going to bring up during our open session was relative to veterans and Jim, because you're just coming out of that again. Are you still going to be, have any responsibility or any input with veterans?
I am. Actually, it's funny you say that, because this year, Scott Hyder, who has done a lot of work, and is a nonprofit dealing with disabled veterans, he came to me about the high rate of veteran suicide. And one of these sort of small things, it doesn't, it seems kind of small, but it's actually large, is having call numbers and hotlines on bridges. It's worked in other states to try to, you know, to try to obviously prevent deaths and suicides. I'm going to be working with him on roads and bridges, and especially bridges on that space, this particular legislative session. But every year, Chuck, we're going to have a Veterans Omnibus Bill that usually looks to, you know, number one, we have the most generous services for veterans, three times more than any other state. So sometimes, it's never enough to do that work. But sometimes we have to look back and see how things have worked, best practices, what needs to be invested in and enhanced. And the second part of this legislative session, we'll have another bill. But in terms of transportation, that's what I'm looking at. And it just sort of worked that way, because I filed the bill with Scott Hyder, so.
All right, that's great. I appreciate that. I mean, there's a whole lot of war memorials and, you know, those kinds of things, but there's grants, the state and the historical side, the Historical Commission, I guess, has been generous in the past. side, the historical commission, I guess, has been generous in the past, and just might be tapping you guys just for a little, little help with that.
Yeah, yeah. And if I could add, I appreciate your question around the support for veterans, and Jim really has been one of the leaders in the House on supporting veterans. Is something we've both worked on together from a regional perspective is, in Devens, and probably already familiar with it, but there's the new nonprofit, or relatively new nonprofit, Clear Path for Veterans to England. Lot of towns, lot of volunteers have supported it. They're probably within a matter of weeks of finally completing housing, basically some of the old bungalows for officers or for soldiers to rehabilitate the bungalows for housing for homeless veterans. So that should be done very soon, in a really impressive effort that had, you know, some funding, including from Mass Development, and then we've provided some state support over the years, too. So that should be done very soon.
That's great. Good organization.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So what's killing the budgets this year is the increase in healthcare costs.
Yeah.
So I think our number was 19%.
19.9.
Almost 20% increase in healthcare. So I know you filed a bill to do state-funded or state-provided.
Right, universal healthcare.
Universal. So, yeah, anything we can do to help move that along, or like I said, the healthcare costs are going up astronomically.
For everyone, not just Littleton, it's universal.
Well, can I add one thing to that, is that our budget, which is 56 billion, so two-thirds of this budget is obligatory spending. It's either by MBTA, court case, bonding, and 42% is healthcare. So it just puts that in perspective.
Which is from the Fed, so, yeah.
And that's another thing to add, is that, you know, with uncertain times, regardless of what side of the aisle you're on, and uncertain times we have in the federal government, some of the budget cuts that have been proposed would end up being about 16, I have 16 billion of the state budget, if we're to move forward with every cut they want to do in the federal government. So our, just to put it in perspective, our rainy day fund is 8.8 billion. So sometimes in the last, you know, four or five years, regardless if a federal program was successful or not, or the state was interested in carrying forward that program, there's tremendous costs, tremendous costs that we don't even think about that have really trickled down to our budget. And again, it goes back to the 40% of Medicaid and...
So, and the other comment I have, I mean, the governors and the legislator keeps pushing more and more housing project and housing bills through, which I think is a great thing. I fully support that we need more housing, but a community like Littleton, we don't have the infrastructure to support all of this. I mean, we're building a new sewer system, but it's basically going to be at capacity as soon as we build it, and we, so, and it's, I mean, I read in the paper, Lowell's getting ready to put $300 million into a sewer system, right? Communities aren't going to be able to build the housing without help on the infrastructure.
I totally agree. So when I chaired this committee, $5.2 billion that we ended up voting for on the final housing bill, it was a production bill, it was to build 200 units by 2030. How are we going to build 230 units and successfully put more than 125 of 177 MBTA communities in if you don't have proper infrastructure? There was a criticism of that about proper infrastructure before MBTA communities passed. Now that passed, okay? So did, so did a bond bill that is going to invest, you know, with the housing authorities, and I understand that, that that could be a question, too, they're getting $2 billion to deal with all of things that we've seen during the pandemic in terms of modernization, new heating pumps, 50 years of lack of investment in construction. So we're going to see that in that space, but ultimately, I couldn't agree more. I say it to anybody who will hear me talk about housing, and I always say, how are we going to do all this in the next, in the next five or six years without the proper infrastructure?
But that's probably where the housing works, which, you know, obviously, great that Littleton got the $1 million, that is specifically designed to help support infrastructure.
But we've both talked about the need for a large infrastructure bill, because that's what's going to have to happen.
Yeah, yeah. Anyone? Do you have any questions for us?
We don't, just keep in touch, you know? I would say, just before we leave, additional priorities, Mr. Chairman, if, you know, through a conversation with the membership, if you, you know, additional things that Senator and I can fight for in the budget, that comes up quicker than you think. And, you know, obviously, grant opportunities, and we want to work with you on some of the economic development earmarks we talked about. So a lot of exciting things going at Littleton, and it's been, you know, it's been a lot of change in the last couple of years, but you look at Littleton, in particular Acton and Westford, and we've become model towns for the state when it comes to moving forward with smart growth and planning, and having, you know, really zoning that people can look as a blueprint for their community as well. So we're a great model for the state.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. See ya.
Our public hearing.
Do we have to read anything?
Does, do we have to read something else in the public hearing?
It's a brand new public hearing, so we should.
Basically, I don't have anything. Basically, we have the notice that we can read the public hearing for what was in the...
That's all we overread.
Okay, I have that here.
Yeah, advertised notice.
Should we open it now? The Littleton Select Board will conduct a public hearing on Monday, March 10th, 2025, at 7:00 PM, in the Sturts Room, Reuben Hor Library, 35 Shattuck Street, Littleton, Mass, to act on the request for approval of a wine and malt off-premises license under Mass General Law, Chapter 138, Section 15, submitted by Charbel Dayer? Did I get it right? Okay. Manager Energy North Incorporated, 256 Air Road, Littleton, Mass. Days and hours of operation, Monday through Saturday, 5:00 AM to 11:00 PM. Alcohol sales, 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM. Sunday, 5:00 AM to 11:00 PM. Alcohol sales, 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM. A copy of the application may be seen at the Select Board Town Administrator's Office, room 306 at 37 Shattuck Street, Littleton, Mass. Comments thereon may be submitted in writing to selectboard@littletonma.org, or to the Select Board Town Administrator's Office, 37 Shattuck Street, Littleton, Mass, 01460, by noon on Wednesday, March 5th, 2025, or in person at the hearing.
Thank you. Okay. So you want to talk about the...
Sure. Thank you very much. Good evening. Harley racer for Energy North Incorporated, and with me tonight is Jeff Hanning, Director of Operations, and the applicant, Charbel Dagger. Energy North was here last fall, seeking a license for off-premise malt and wine sales for their 25 King Street Road. I think everybody remembers that, and it was denied due to the proximity to a school, and there was quite a bit of opposition to it at that meeting. I wasn't here, but I did view it. And the board did say that they would probably be more supportive of the location two miles down the road. And so we're here tonight with that location two miles down the road, at 256 Air Road. This, Energy North has other license, they're experienced, and they are knowledgeable about how to carry out the sales in a safe manner. We have submitted the application and the floor plan. Happy to show you the floor plan if you want to look at that, just to show where this would go. And you did mention that the hours of operation would be Monday through Saturday from 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM, and Sunday from 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM. And here's the floor plan. The red Xs indicate where there will be cameras. The front register shows where the cashier will be, and they will be able to see where the wine and the beer will be located. The current plans are, the two islands there that say Take Home Chips and the nuts will be pallets, platforms for beer and wine, and then the first four...
First four coolers, correct?
Yeah, first four coolers to the right of the walk-in cooler will be for beer sales. And that's how it would initially be set up if this license does go forward.
To the right, meaning towards the register, or away from?
Starting at the, starting at the storage, those next four to the left, yeah, to the left.
Okay, thank you.
And, and that's, that's basically what I have to tell you. I'm happy to answer any questions and have Mr. Charbel and Mr. Hanning here to answer any questions as well.
Well, thank you guys for coming out. I did have a question. I know there's been talk with, you're going to be hooking up to air sewer, correct? Is that still in play? And is, what's the future, I guess, of this building? I mean, from what I saw, it looked like you guys are going to expand and have potentially a whole nother building there? Is that in the cards, in the works, or something the future is going to bring? Or are we just going to keep this footprint?
Nothing set in stone at this point in time. We have, we have talked about a raise and rebuild at that location, so we're still weighing our options on that front. Yeah.
Something with an all-town feel would be nice.
Are you getting a donut place pack?
No. But maybe another, if we raise and rebuild, it could be another QSR of some sort.
This is kind of what we expected last time. So I don't have, is the police, I'm assuming the fire.
Yeah, they both approved it in the package. This is the existing footprint?
That's correct.
And are there plans to raise it and rebuild or not?
No formal plans, it's not, other than discussions.
Okay.
Word travels fast in a small town.
Well, they were in front of the planning board asking for, and we signed on the IMA to the sewers.
I have a question. I noticed that the 8:00 AM start time, or, no, sorry, yeah, 8:00 AM during the week seemed a little earlier than at least the other businesses that I looked up. I just wanted to make the fellow members aware, One Stop starts at 9:00 AM during the week, and 10:00 AM on Sundays. Common Convenience starts at 9:00 AM and 10:00 AM. I didn't get a chance to look up everybody, but 8:00 AM.
I think Donalyn's is open at 8:00 or 7:00.
What are they selling, alcohol?
I don't know. Are you at 24-hour operation outside of that?
No, it's 5:00, 5:00 AM to 11:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, 5:00 AM on Sundays.
Karen, Common Convenience doesn't sell before 9:00 or 10:00?
No, Common Convenience licenses 9:00 AM to 11:00 PM, and then 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM on Sundays.
I just assumed it was. I mean, I've never tried to buy it.
I'm not even sure I have an issue with it, but other than, we should probably expect that we might be getting this, an early, you know, request to start earlier from the other holders.
I think the 9:00 and 10:00 zones, like, are reasonable.
Yeah, the only, the only argument that I'd make on their behalf is that Gishigah Hills and Redtail, people going by to go to those, and sometimes people wait to fill up a cooler on their way, you know, for earlier tee-tones.
Good point.
I don't have any problem with them opening at 8:00.
They're going to be leasing at 8:00 o'clock.
Just the same way they would at 12:00.
Yeah, there's not going to, yeah, there's not going to be any difference in the safety or observation of what's going on at times.
It's good to be aware of, though.
Public comment?
Any public comment?
Okay.
So we close the hearing?
Move that we close the hearing?
Is that our roll call vote, or?
Yes.
Okay.
By Matthew, seconded by Chuck, all those in favor?
Aye.
That's a roll call.
I think you said it wasn't.
Well, you're only closing, and I think your final vote should be a roll call.
Yeah.
Aye. Okay. Okay. So the hearing's closed. Do we, any further discussion? Are we already to?
I'm, I think this is a better location. I think they've done their diligence. I think we should approve it.
And I appreciate them.
Yes, coming back.
And serving that side of town, which is kind of a wade right now, without condoning.
Yeah, right.
Gary's snapping a shake. Once he gets past that line, he's like, "Need a drink?"
Okay, move that the Select Board vote to approve the application of Energy North, Inc., for a wine and malt beverages off-premises alcohol license requested under Mass General Law, Chapter 138, Section 15, submitted by Energy North, Inc., 256 Air Road, Littleton, Mass, with alcohol sales Monday through Saturday, 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM, and Sunday, 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM. Issuance of license is subject to ABCC approval.
Second.
Moved by Matthew, seconded by Karen. Do a roll call, Chuck?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Matthew?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
And Marks and I, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for doing business in town.
Thanks for coming back.
Thank you.
Public input. Don't jump at once.
Can I ask something to say about the orchard? I was going to go into the discussion, or do you want...
Come on up.
Hi, everybody. Kristin Kazokas, Ex cottage Way. I would like to say, just, what do I want to say here? Please don't sign the lease to John Bransfield tonight, first off. Second, I do have some concerns about the management plan that he's set forth, and a lot of his permaculture plantings along the border of the property, along the roadside. His intention is to block the view of the farm operations, and I'm concerned about the stone walls, because the stone walls, along with the road, are part of the historical bylaw. And so, right now, the stone walls have invasive species on them. In order for those to be cared for and maintained, I think there should be some sort of setback that can be agreed upon, that whatever planting that he does is set back away from those stone walls, so that there can be access, whether it's the town itself is maintaining those walls, or that the invasive species also don't spread into whatever he's planting. And also, because of the curves on those roads, having a setback would allow visibility, not only to the vistas and the farm, which I think we all want, I don't think, although I'm not looking forward to acres of landscape fabric, I just think that overall, having some sort of setback, at least, you know, and also for any reason, if there needs to be vehicles to get on site for emergency or fire or anything like that. And then the other part I wanted to bring up is, regardless of whatever the future of the orchard, I really thought that the collaborative effort of the Orchard Working Group was successful, and that, moving forward, that some sort of mechanism with the parties of our town that are involved, because the care of this orchard, we want to do it differently than our last lease, right? And for you as the Select Board, it's a lot to navigate with everything else that you're trying to do in town, which, so I'm proposing, or suggesting, or hoping, that maybe there is a group that is kind of the overseers of what's going on, so that if folks in town have issues with the orchard, they can go to them, not to whomever's leasing it. That there might be a representative from Conservation, a representative from the Ag Commission, from the Select Board, from the folks that live in that neighborhood. I would, I would like to see the, a representative of the Neshoba praying Indians invited to that table, so that they can address any concerns that might relate, that they may have, or that they could see that we in town don't have, because they've got a different perspective of that land. And I would really like to have them be a part of the conversation of the stewardship of that land, regardless if they're the ones that are, you know, heading the stewardship-ness, or, or not. I'm not sure how this is all going to play out, but I really think it's important for us as a town to let them have a presence and the stewardship of this land. So, I think that's it.
So I can answer most of those. So we're not going to sign the lease tonight.
Okay, great.
I will talk to John about the management plan, about a setback. I don't think he...
It makes sense.
But I'm going to be clear, I don't think he has any plans to put hedgerows up at the edge of the property. Everything he's said so far has been, I want to leave the edge of the property so that it looks like an orchard.
Yeah, I got that impression.
So I don't, I don't know where that's coming from. So, so I don't, I don't know where that's coming from, but-
And there's a line where he says that he wants to do permanent trees along the edge of the road to calm traffic, and that, and then he goes on to say that he doesn't want it to block the vistas.
So, I'll clarify that with him. I can't imagine that that will be a problem.
Okay.
As far as the, you know, a special group, I believe that, as it stands now, the Select Board has care, custody, and control of the orchard, so if there is an issue with the leasie, with the management plan, anyone should come to the Select Board, and that would be the, the body that would be, that would address those issues. In, in my opinion, that's the correct way to go, instead of adding another layer of, of people who are appointed and may or may not be there to follow through on it. Like, we have, we have, we have a system in place for that. We are, you know, as you were there on Thursday, we're gonna commit to a professional review of it, to make sure that, long-term, doesn't happen. But I think for day-to-day issues, I don't think that any, you know, there's more accountability for him, because the Select Board is overseeing the lease than for any of the other farms in town. So I, I guess I believe that should be sufficient. And we, we can debate that, like-
Right, we haven't talked about that, but, you know, whether it's a yearly, or a biannual, or something update.
Yeah.
Or whether we walk in the farm, once a year, twice a year.
Okay, so I think we can, we can talk about that at the update, when I'm gonna go over later.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then the last one is, John is, has, is trying to reach out to the tribe, to talk to them, because he has spoke, he's said to me several times, he's very interested in getting them involved and finding, you know, places for them to help and to work with them.
Well, he hasn't signed the lease yet, so it, you know, I, it's one of those things is, I would think it's actually the town that should be reaching out to the Nishoba, to offering them a place at the table of this conversation, or a place on the land versus John Bransfield, who, at this point, doesn't have a legal option to do so. It would just be some, so, in my eyes, I would think, and if I was going to be putting my blood, sweat, and tears into that land, I would wanna have my legal obligation directly with the town, not through another leasie, because then I'm gonna be held, whatever he does, what if he screws up? What if he doesn't pay his rent? And then all of a sudden, I lose out. And I'm not sure that's the type of relationship that we wanna establish with the Nishoba.
So, so what, what John is talking about is land that he is leasing, he would work with the tribe on that land. There are, there are plenty of additional land that he's not leasing, that are inside the orchard, that we have control of, or ConsCom has control of, that we can talk about to find, to work with the tribe on getting them on that land.
Okay.
Yeah.
And just to be, I don't know if John has reached out to the tribe in other avenues, but he's used me, and I've just passed a message along. So, I don't know if he's used any other avenues.
He has, I know he has.
Okay, 'cause I'm not a representative of the tribe.
No, I understand. That's why he, he reached out to them directly.
Okay, all right, wonderful. Okay, thank you.
Rob around 25, Juneup Road. I wanna thank the Select Board for the meeting with John Bransfield. I thought that was very, very positive. Also, the meeting with MAPC, led by MAPC the other night, also very positive. I wanna pick up, with regard to the other night, the professional review that you just mentioned, and I think you and I had a little discussion. You mentioned having it on an annual basis, certainly at the beginning, I, I think that's appropriate. And then you also identified a public hearing with regard to the content of that. I, I think that's terrific as well. John was so open with regard to his speaking, that I think, addressing some of the things I heard the other night, with regard to concerns, with regard to the removal of the blighted trees and so forth, and concerns expressed with regard to the soil as being, yes, they're blighted, but they're still providing some retention, some aspect of holding the soil, et cetera, and doing some positive things. And so I find myself hoping that either John can volunteer, or you folks, as you're finalizing the lease, can get into some aspect of, some awareness for the public with regard to what is taking place with that soil, with regard to runoff concerns and things of that nature that I felt was heard the other night. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Members' updates. Want to start, start, Chuck?
Sure. Attended the Veterans Breakfast a couple weeks ago, the Police Department put on, and I'm glad I did. It's always a good conversation, and, and speaking with some of the veterans, there's, there's different issues, which, well, I was separate up tonight. But one of the issues that was repeated was the memorials in town, and specifically the memorial on the common, needing to be fixed, essentially. There's a lot of names missing, there's some names on there that perhaps-
The spell, and, yeah, a lot of things.
Yeah, so this, needs to be revisited, and we'll have to work with it. Maybe it's something that we, with John on his way out, lame duck Veterans Agent, maybe it'll be something that we could, we could, Chuck, task the, the new Veterans Agent with, but it's definitely something that, I wanna be able to go back to the next Veterans Breakfast and say, "We brought it up, we're looking at it, and there's, there's a plan to go forward." Yeah, that was really, you know, no other major kids.
Same, I went to the Veterans Breakfast as well, I, I did listen to that. We also had some other discussions relative to Senior Tax Workup program, and how our season is very short for the, right? It's a little different than some of the other communities, and I was trying to get some answers on the why, and I'll be sharing that back with the individuals that asked. But it was more of, our season kinda ends in March, I believe, for a Senior Tax Workup, so anyone that works for Poles-
Well, Brian May-
Sure, please.
Anybody that works for the Clerk's Office, they get an extension of those hours.
Okay, that's the exception. That's what I found out. But the, anyone else that does anything for the town is basically volunteering on their time, so I was trying to find out if there was a way to just do a full year's work, where individuals can continue. Still more to come on that. We kicked off the Charter Committee, so that was great success. Nine members, eight showed up and one, one zoomed in, so we had a full, full committee. Collison was there, Jim was there for the kickoff. There will be virtual component going forward, there'll be ones that they need to be in person, obviously, for some of the stuff, but we wanted to make sure that everybody had, was able to participate. If they could not make it, they, they had that option, so. A lot of great questions, and I think they're gonna do some great things for us. Lots to look forward to there. Yeah, the robotics, I was gonna bring up, but you already had that, and we had some great sports teams. I, I don't wanna, I might miss, but I know basketball and hockey, I personally attended, and they, they both won the first round of their state turn, state tournament, and they both lost the second, second round, and you start to face some of the unfair competition, I'll say. No, they had great seasons, and it was really, really enjoyable to watch. That's about it.
I'm sorry, just, we also had the Senior Tax Relief.
Yeah.
We, we had that, and just still trying to find ways to get, to let people know what we do have. We're still discussing how to put something forward with, with our legislators to find ways to offer additional relief, potentially.
So, I went to the MMA Breakfast, Legislative Breakfast, and there's a Act authorizing the establishment of a means test of senior citizens' property taxes exemption that's going to be-
Oh, they're putting on a-
That MMA's encouraging people, something to reach out to.
Yeah. Took a picture of it. There is an increase in, in the programs that Littleton does have, from all the advertising efforts that have pushed forward, and some of the presentations after luncheons and things, so that's, that's a good story, but I think we can do a lot more, so. More to come. I think that committee still has some purpose. We were, we were gonna discuss, well, what now? I think we have some paths forward that we're gonna continue, so.
The MAPC held the first of two public meetings about the orchard. It was, it was in this room, there's probably 30, 35 people there, so it was quite well attended. I thought it went very well, it was well-run by the MAPC. It was really focused primarily on collecting information from the public on what the public wanted to see for goals and, and criteria for the orchard in the future, and, you know, and a little bit of history of where, how we got where we are. But they're gonna come back, they're, they have another meeting on April 14th, where they're gonna synthesize all the things that they heard and sort of present it back to us, to talk about ways of making sure we don't get into this position again, where we're scrambling to try to find someone to take care of the land. And then, and a representative from the tribe read a statement from the Chief Quiet Storm, which was, which was very nice, and I'm glad that that was there. And I think at the end, there was a, a good question and answer. I thought it was, overall, like, a very positive and constructive discussion, so kudos to the MAPC for doing their job. They, they really did do a good job of facilitating.
Lots of behind-the-scenes stuff, but upfront, and public facing was the, podcast continues. Every, we're settled into about every other Thursday. Last Thursday, we had a deep dive into the, into the, just the micro grants from housing, so helped folks understand who's eligible and, and for what. If anybody has recommendations for future episodes, I'd be glad to hear them, any of you. If anybody wants to ever come on.
Stevie Onley and Potholes, because I get a lot of calls right now.
This time of year, he probably wants to take vacation.
We're getting multimedia presentations on Potholes now.
Yeah.
But, yeah, not a good time of year to do that, don't.
Well, I mean, maybe it is. The communication's good, right?
Well, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, it's a thoughtful, we can reach out to him.
There's some bad, some bad roads out there.
Yeah, yeah, but, yeah, but it's an open invitation, right?
Select their boxing, maybe.
Boxing? Not, not a great audio. That's all for me.
Like I mentioned, I went to the MMA Legislative Breakfast in Marlboro on Friday. A lot of the same stuff that was presented earlier was shared. There was a lot of people there, very worried about whether or not the remote meeting laws was going to pass and when, and how soon, because it's going to affect how meetings are scheduled very soon. I also attended, Senator Eldridge and I have seen each other quite a bit lately, 'cause he was there, and I was at his Green Advisory Committee meeting on Saturday in the library. He had someone, a representative from the Sierra Club, come and talk about their legislative agenda and, and what their, it was a very good talk. Matthew and I were at the Affordable Housing Trust meeting, where MHP was there to talk about, help us develop a plan for developing the Durkey property as affordable housing. I think we're meeting again in early April to get more information and work on generating an RFP. And then, I wanted to remind everyone that mini-golf is in the library Friday, I think at 6:00 to 9:00 Friday, and 10:00 to 3:00 on Saturday, so get your tickets and-
Green beer?
Huh?
Green beer?
I, Durgable will be having beer, I don't know if it'll be green, but, and watch what you bid on, 'cause there are certain things I want, so.
You just enticed me.
Yeah. Updates?
Yes, I had shared with the Select Board a communication from the Air Select, from the Air Select Board to, to the Governor's Office, and I don't know if it's coincidence or anything, but Chief McGurty let me know early, early this morning that he received an inquiry at 8:30 last night from Administration and Finance, from A&amp;F, requesting information, some, some financial backup information on, on the $9.1 million request, in which he had previously submitted, so they, but, they have it again.
Good sign.
No.
It's better than no.
Yeah, no, absolutely. And also, so 550 King Street Development, we have, there was a conversation just this, late this afternoon, confirmed from the Governor's Office, the groundbreaking will take place middle to the end of April, but it will be in the April timeframe, and that, that date will be firmed up within the next five or six business days, and then I will make sure that the Select Board knows that. And we are on, we're on schedule, LELWD's on schedule for the town sewer project, for that to be, for that to be completed for June 30th, which is, which is, which would be imperative, so it'd be great. You have anything?
Center on Shattuck Streets, nearing substantial completion. I think technically, there's, the, the date is actually tomorrow, but there's still some work that they have going on in the exterior of the building, is, which will take some time. We're also looking to bring in, in front of the Planning Board, the boundaries for 31 Shattuck Street. That's gonna, it was supposed to happen this month, it got pushed back a month, so, and we're also adding work to the scope to bring 31 Shattuck Street up to code for, so that we can then sell it when, when ready, and hook it up to an active sewer system. Right now, you can't use water flush in the village. And May 16th at 1:00 PM is the scheduled ribbon cutting time, so for that, this is what we're targeting right now.
Which?
This is for the Center on Shattuck Street, for the-
So, are we doing a ribbon cutting for King? I mean, it's-
36 King?
It is kind of a-
For 36 King, we could, we weren't planning necessarily.
Yeah.
I think an open house or something? An open house or something?
Yeah, we should.
Yeah, we'll do something, I think, for 36 King, 'cause I think it, when, when that's ready, that's going to be, you know, it's gonna be something nice that really the whole community should see, so that's a great-
Well, a lot of taxpayer money went into it, so.
Yes, a great suggestion. So, and that, 36 King's coming along, we're doing a lot of patching and painting, working on, you know, a lot of, some of the signage, getting that up now, but that's coming along. And as far as Shaker Langos, we had our first sustainability subcommittee meeting last week, it was successful. There'll be another follow-up meeting from that, and we are on target to provide a presentation at 6:00 PM before the annual town meeting in the cafeteria. Be a 15-minute presentation and open it up to 35 to 40 minutes of questions after that. So, that's what those projects are.
Disability Commission.
Good evening, and thank you for having me. Diane Crory, Chairman of the Disability Commission. The Disability Commission is in the process of applying for a grant in the spring, and have been in contact with Jeffrey Dugan, no relation.
That's right. He doesn't pronounce his name correctly, that's why.
Oh, I was gonna say that.
Assistant Director of the, for Community Services, Massachusetts Office of Disability, in which he has stated to the town, they have specific administrative requirements to first and foremost, complete to qualify. One was to name an ADA coordinator, which you've already done, to get that information onto our website, which we have also done. And that took place earlier, about six weeks ago, I believe, and that information is readily available, and you can find it on the, it says ADA Coordinator, as well as, he is the-
Facilities Minister.
Oh, sorry, Facilities Director. And the next administrative requirement is for documents on the following, notice of non-discrimination and a grievance procedure. Those two notices are in front of you, or were in your packet. The notice of non-discrimination basically states that the Town of Littleton advises its employees and the public, they do not discriminate. It's a simple notice that we took actually off the state. Alls we did was change the state information to Town of Littleton. So it's a basic notice, and we actually put Eric's information on the bottom. It's simple and easy to read, and easy for anybody to, we, if you accept it, we would put it on Eric's website. The second information is if somebody is looking to file a complaint, a violation. Again, we took the information from the state, took the state information off of there, and added the Town of Littleton and the ADA Coordinator for Littleton on here. It's a single-page document. We added Eric's information on there as the first person to- We added Eric's information on there as the first person to write to. Second information is our excellent Assistant Town Administrator, Ryan's information, and then it goes to the state. So these two documents have to be accepted by this board. If you accept it, that's just one more step forward for the Disabilities Commission to be able to apply for a grant. So I'm asking this evening for you to accept these two documents so that we can go forward.
I'm on the commission, and I approve of this.
Okay. Move at the Select Board vote to approve, should I say, the Disability Commission's 2025 non-discrimination policy.
Second?
Moved by Matthew, second by Karen. All those in favor?
Aye.
And any comment on the, any comment on the grievance?
Actually, do you want to have Eric's information on the grievance as well, or is it just Ryan?
Both information, because the first one, Eric would be the one that they would grieve against. So he would give their, his, they would grieve against him, but then he would, they would have to give it in writing to him as well, and then he would give, give it, his comments back to them in writing, even though he has already turned them down, it still has to be in writing. So then the second grievance would go to Ryan, and then going forward.
I think Chuck's point is that...
It's not on, it's not on the document that we have.
Oh.
It talks about how to file, if, if Eric, if the ADA coordinator doesn't respond satisfactorily, how to contact Ryan, but it doesn't actually have...
His name.
Oh, okay. Well, mine does, sorry, I don't know why yours doesn't.
No, it has Ryan's name, it doesn't have...
Eric's name.
They must, the wrong document must have gotten uploaded. Eric's doc, Eric's information is on mine.
Okay.
So as long as we make sure that's...
I can give you mine to...
I'll just check and make sure it's really there. Eric Durba is on here, so. Move at the Select Board vote to approve the 2025 Americans with Disabilities Act grievance process as provided by Town Clerk Diane Crory.
Second?
Moved by Matthew, second by Karen. All those in favor?
Aye.
And the next information is, on January 10th, the Disabilities Commission held its duly posted meeting with Zoom, and the following vote was taken. The Commission Chairman attended a meeting as well as created a, that the Commission Chairman attended a meeting, which I am here this evening, as well as created a letter to the Select Board and explained our request regarding Luigi Iacovialo, Iacovialo, sorry, and asked the Select Board to uphold our vote to have him removed and create a vacancy as he has been unable to attend a meeting for well over a year. This would allow us to enable another resident the opportunity to join our commission. As you are the members, you are, this board is the members that actually vote on this, we are, we have to come back to you and ask you to do this. I know that it's a difficult decision for us to have to come to you, and I know it's a difficult decision for you to have to make, but there has been at least four different times that we've had to cancel a meeting because we haven't, haven't had a quorum. And so we're asking, and we do have two other people that are interested in the board, so we're asking you to take this vote, as difficult as it is.
Okay. I think it's a health issue.
Move at the Select Board vote to approve the request of the Disability Commission to uphold the vote of the Commission on January 10th, 2025, to remove member Luigi Iacovialo from the Disability Commission.
Second?
Moved by Matthew, second by Karen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Diane, one quick question on those grievance policies, where you approved them for 2025, do we have to approve them annually, or are they good?
No, it can stay up for as long as you want, unless you decide that you want to make changes on them. It's, they're good forever.
Okay.
I guess the only change would be Eric's name.
Yeah.
Right. Right, and I think you're right, it didn't say 2025, but maybe that's the kickoff date, because it's...
Yeah, I just...
You're right, it's just didn't, probably need to be reported that way.
I mean, that's, that would be the only changes, you know.
Okay.
Persons change. Thank you.
Thank you. Select Board discussions, the Orchard lease.
So Mark and I met with John Bransfield last Friday and went over the final, what I think are probably the final round of changes. So we have a version of the lease in here, and I'm going to outline a few minor changes that we're, that we will still make, but substantively, it's not going to change from what you have in front of you. The first thing is, we did settle on rent. The final numbers are 1,500 per month for the first two years, and then 84, 75 per, sorry, 1,500 per quarter for the first two years, and 84, 75 per quarter for years three through 20. And that's based on an average rent of 2,500 for the structures and 100, 2,500 per month for the structures and 100 per month for the land.
With the intent of putting this into a stabilization fund for the Orchard.
We, that's not in the lease, but, yeah, that's not in the lease, obviously.
It doesn't need to be.
No, but that's just our own.
Right, so...
We have that created already?
The town meeting.
We did last...
This town meeting.
Yep, this town meeting.
So Matthew and I came up with those numbers by basically looking at the, Eric put together a cost estimate for maintaining the barn over the next 20 years, and based on the cost of maintaining that, we amortized that over the 20-year lease, and that's how we came up with effectively the, what we've decided was a reasonable, a cost for the structure.
And John will have to pay for the, the property taxes as well, which is, I think, around 7,500 a year without the house. We are going to remove the lower barn and the cottage from the lease. John is okay with that. He's not necess, it's not, you know, critical or necessary for his operation. I asked, I asked him to do that because I am trying to bring a bunch of people to the table to discuss ways of getting the Nishoba praying Indians involved on the land, and they have stated an interest in a structure. So we're not committed to anything, but it does give us the opportunity to do that in the future. We are going to remove the self-help land, which is across the road from the lower barn, from the lease. I mean, that shouldn't be in the lease anyway, because it's not A P R land, but we're, but it was included, I believe, so we need to exclude it. The final one is, we want to add a paragraph, a, a, a section that gives us the right to reassign portions if those parcels are mutually agreeable to both parties. So again, when we spoke with John, he stated that some of the A P R portions are not going to be especially useful for him. Tip, specifically, it was the, the A P R that's across the road from the lower barn. And he had no specific objection to us reassigning a parcel, for example, to the tribe or someone else, if, if both the Select Board and he agrees to it. So we're going to add a, just language in there that says, we can do this if both parties agree.
But let's not have conversations with any parties unless we're doing it as a board.
Correct.
Yes. So that, you're, this is, we're not talking about a sublease situation in this regard. This would be us directly opening up...
I mean, we're, yeah, we're, we're not talking about doing anything right now, we're just saying, if we want to do that in the future, we want to make sure that we can, without having to do a whole new lease.
But just make sure, without it affecting the monthly, the quarterly payment, correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Because this would be a mutually agreed upon?
That's, it would be mutually agreed upon, so. I would, I would say, it would, it would, it would not affect the payment, because this would be portions of the land that he isn't going to be using for active, active arbor cultivation.
Okay.
And then the last one that, that is not part of the, not part of the lease, but should be part of the management plan was, and I think we discussed this, an annual inspection by a professional, paid for by the revolving fund, followed by a presentation to the Select Board, and I think, you know, public comment and like essentially a public hearing, to allow people to discuss what they think about it, issues that they have with it, and we should have John come in as well, to have him discuss what he did in the last year and what he's going to do in the next year.
Yeah. Great, no, it's great, should have, should have happened last lease.
Agreed, yeah, so. So that's it, actually, that's where we're at. But did I, do you think, did I miss anything?
No.
Yeah, so.
Town of Stowe doesn't have an E on it.
Town of Stowe what?
Doesn't have an E on it. That's the, the ski resort does.
Interesting.
Oh, yeah, Stowe.
Lester's, it's first paragraph of the lease.
Oh. Remove the E in Stowe.
Oh, I'll tell Jenny.
She's a skier. She's a skier, so she should put the E on.
I want, I want to hear from the contract lawyer.
Yeah. I mean, this has been vetted already.
Jenny, Jenny has drafted everything, and she's, this is language, like, she basically, John had, for example, a request to change the termination clause, which was very one-sided on the towns, and he said, can we just make it mutual, mutual? And Jenny said, yeah, that's fine. So we now have language that says, if we want to terminate for convenience, it has to be mutually agreed upon.
Okay. But we still have the power to terminate.
Yeah, there's, there's tons of defaults, and, yeah.
It looked like it, we still have power to terminate.
Yeah.
Okay. So the only issue would be, do we have to do anything town meeting-wise with, with the lower barn?
No.
Or is that completely under our control right now?
The lower barn is on...
It's just being removed from the lease, that's all.
The lower barn is on, on land owned by us that's not under A P R or conservation.
Okay, so the only thing on the town meeting would be the breaking off the smaller piece that we, we passed on?
We don't have to do anything for town meeting.
Yeah, there's nothing for the Orchard for town meeting.
No, but there is for conservation.
Yeah, 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 but that's separate.
Yes, yes. The only thing for town meeting is to create the revolving fund. So this would...
This doesn't even go in front of town meeting.
No.
Once, once we sign it, that's next year.
No, it's a, it's a lease, it's not...
So the intention would be, I would like to sign at the next meeting on the 24th. And I, obviously, we can have a final version of the lease, it has to have, we have to have a map and a list of parcels and so forth, but, you know, make sure all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed. But I would like to sign it, because John is already like, I'm, I'm already late on this season, so I want to get him on there as soon as possible.
Yeah?
Any concerns, I mean, do you guys have any concerns?
I'm here.
I mean, I can think of a million after the 20 years we just put up with, but...
So I would add to your master list of what you're adding.
Yeah.
A clause, probably in B, Section 1, C, 2. We've already got assurances that he won't move or remove or sell any of the rocks. We might as well throw in a line about not disturbing the walls.
Okay. Sure. I'm sure he won't have a problem with that.
We, the inventory of all the, of equipment, that's probably something that needs to be done, though.
What's that?
The, an inventory of present, current equipment?
I don't, I don't think there is any.
So all of that, all the, the working stuff for the mo, that all went back to D P W?
No. There, there was no working stuff when Charlie left.
No.
We bought more.
We bought Kubodas and stuff.
Right, that's what I mean.
That's not going to be, okay, I understand. There's no, there's going to be nothing left for John to take over. He, he did ask us to remove trash, so we are talking about how to work that out, although it may be...
We pulled a lot out of there, but there's still a lot of that.
But there's still more, so we, we need to, we'll, we'll figure something out with him.
To Karen's point about the protection of the walls, the Mish property up on Grimes Lane, Mr. Mish mows about a...
10, 15.
Six to 10, 15, whatever, a, a pretty wide area for him to be able to maintain the walls and to keep invasives, invasives from...
And it is to get vehicles through, too. I mean, emergency vehicles are important, but just, we don't know what the future of the Orchard is, and to have that separation, I think it's going to be critical for us to get in and out of there just to do anything.
Yeah. I mean, I believe his plan is to start removing invasives immediately, and I would assume that that would include all the poison ivy on the walls. So I can clarify that with him. I, I really, I don't, I would be very surprised if he has any issue with language saying the walls must not be disturbed. And, you know, I know that he has a plan for removing invasives.
And he had a plan, and the, and the management plan was like putting walking trails around the perimeter and things, so.
Yeah.
So we can make sure, I mean, if we have requirements on how wide they should be or something, we could probably talk to him about that, too.
I had some suggestions for maybe moving around the Section 14 a little bit, but it's just rearranging the deck chairs.
Do you want to, do you want to send them to me, and I'll give them to Jenny?
Yeah.
Or you can send them to me and Jenny and Mark and...
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
More structurally, more structurally than content.
Yeah, it's just, I, I think we could probably cut down on his, on what, how many things he needs to submit to us by pulling a couple of things into that annual report. And I think we should probably, based on prior experience, require him, if he's not going to, we, for example, we ask for a copy of pesticide applications reports, but if he doesn't have any, then I think we need him to affirmatively state that.
Yeah.
So that we don't, yeah, so that we know what we're not, that we're not missing anything.
That's good. Yeah, will you email me?
That's in here, yeah.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
Anything else on the Orchard?
Thank you both.
Yeah, I know, a lot of work.
Yep.
He's, you know...
It's, I mean, lessons learned, hopefully.
It's been much, much smoother than the last time we did this.
Yeah.
It's gone much better.
That's great.
And I think, I think he's a good fit for the Orchard, too.
Well, and it keeps the land as well, and who knows what the future is going to bring with that piece of land. It's nice to, nice to have it as part of the town's inventory, such a beautiful property, so that's...
Yep.
This is, this is good.
Okay.
I M A with Acton.
This is, Mr. Chairman and members of the Select Board, this is something I, we've been keeping you up to date on. This is, it has been, as you can remember, one of the reports back a couple meetings ago, there were changes to this compared to the town's version, in which they have acknowledged, recognizing the changes and accept the changes according to our Town Council. And so we make that request before you to sign this evening. This will not start until July 1st, and that is because we're still paying for Nishoba through, through June 30th. Okay? So just to, to let you know.
Who, who put this together?
Town Council put...
At your behest or the Board of Health?
Mine.
So just for my own edification, what's the difference in cost between what we're doing with Acton versus what we're doing with Nishoba?
I don't have that off the top of my head, I'm sorry.
It seems like a lot more, but I wasn't positive on that.
Yeah, I think you're talking about, I think roughly speaking, probably an additional 20,000, as far as is 20, 35, we're 15, roughly speaking, so. But it makes sense, because you're not, you know, it's sharing it amongst two communities, and you're going to probably get a lot more value out of this in terms of what this will, what this will provide for the town. So it's definitely an upgrade in service in terms of what we can expect.
Where are we putting the public nurse when they're in town?
Well, Ryan has done a great job scoping out. He's, he's, he's looking in every closet and everything, so.
Get a red state card and go with it.
Ramaka Garage, I think it's right now.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll have us.
It's Maplewood, he's, garage's off limits.
Well, I think he or she has her, has their pick of Tesla to sit in, in the garage.
All set?
Just, there's no more, there was no resource, personnel resourcing request beyond this for next fiscal year?
From Nishoba?
For, for our, from our health, our Board of Health, or our, our health department.
Beyond, then, correct. Beyond what the, the conversation that Ryan and I had with them of wanting to reach a plateau of double-digit employees, and then we would have to, based upon revenue for the next year, make that determination in the next budget, what it, what it can support.
There's still not a good backup plan, though.
No, I know. The other thing was the rates. I know we had talked about this offline. There's no Select, Select Board has no government authority over the rates running this, right?
No, they set them, it's, doesn't have to, it would be a courtesy thing to the Select Board, the way, the way it's structured right now.
Yeah, it was already, I mean, we've already, we've seen it.
Yes, right. Right, exactly. Right, so, I, I will, I will bet they will not even come close to the revenue they're claiming. Not even close.
That means we're really healthy, that's all.
I'm sorry?
That means we're really healthy.
Sure, I'll go with that.
All set? Move that the Select Board vote to approve the intermunicipal agreement, IMA, between the town of Acton and town of Littleton for a shared public health nurse.
Second.
Move by Matthew, second by Karen, all those in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
So it came to my attention that we don't actually have representatives, or, oh, I don't think we have a representative of Magic, right?
Correct.
Ryan has been the representative of the MAPC, but hasn't been attending, able to attend most of the meetings. And it seems like something we should probably be participating in a little more regularly so that we know what's going on in the area and can actually, yeah. I think there's a lot of resources and expertise we're missing out on by not going to these. So for MAPC, I believe there are two representatives from Littleton, one appointed by the Select Board and one from the Planning Board, and Magic, we have one, or do I have it backwards?
I think that's, that sounds right, yeah.
So the, the Planning Board will at some point in the not-too-distant future be appointing their representative, which is currently vacant, so. So we found out what, you said that MAPC meets four times a year, Magic meets about 10 times a year, Tuesday mornings. So I don't know who, if anyone is interested in being a rep, or if we want to open this up and, to the public to have them select a, you know, we can open this up and have someone generally apply. I think for MAPC, they prefer having a Select Board member, but I'm not 100% positive, so. I don't know what people think, anyone wants to volunteer?
I mean, I guess, is it Select Board members that are on these, we don't want to put somebody out there that's not, if that's.
Keith was.
Keith was.
Our representative for both, I believe, in the past, he hasn't been here for a couple of years.
Well, I think people from Concord can still represent though, right?
He actually is representing Concord.
Yes, he is.
Maybe Littleton and Concord, regionalize it.
Simon IMA.
He'd love that. Does anyone have interest in it?
We could ask Tim Goddard.
What's Magic?
It got right here, because I had to ask the same question.
What is Ma, I don't know, what is Magic?
I think it's like a smaller component.
Metropolitan area planning.
No, minimum end advisory group into local coordination. It's under M, M.
It's under MAPC. It's a sub-group within it, yeah.
So this would be one person?
It doesn't have to be the same person to do both, no.
Karen, to further answer your question, it involves, for this sub-region, it's 13 communities, Acton, Bedford, Bolton, Boxborough, Carlisle, Concord, Hudson, Lexington, Lincoln, Littleton, Maynard, Stowe, without an E, and Sudbury.
Reader charge, just real quick.
What do you want?
Wants to say the thing she do.
Established as a growth management committee in 1984, Magic has become a respected voice of regional decision-making. Magic consists of planning and Select Board representatives from all 13 communities, or, or they're designated. Focuses on transportation, the environment, energy, open space, affordable housing, economic and community development, and legislative issues.
If there's a passionate person that really wants to do this, I, I would say have at it, if there's somebody, I mean, outside of our board. Some of the, we, since we do have the appoint, according to this, we do have the authority to do that. I'm not going to appoint you unless you really, try to put up with it.
Neither one of us are.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll do it.
Great.
Yeah, the only, the only person in town that I would think of, that's, was part of not Magic, actually, no, Carlisle is part of Magic. Tim was the town manager of Carlisle, so I would say if he's looking for something to do in his, his schedule other than town meetings, might not be a bad representative.
So I.
And if he says no, then we.
Oh, we should make a motion.
Karen becomes.
Charter committee review also. He's on the charter committee.
He is, yeah. You, so you, unless.
Do you want to do it, or do you?
Or your designee?
You want to do it, or do you?
Well, I guess, is it, is it the same person? Are you appointing one person for MAPC and one person for Magic?
We could, we could do either.
I don't, I don't think I can do both.
What was the meeting schedule again?
MAPC meets approximately four times a year, Magic meets 10 times a year.
Okay, so 14 meetings. I've got so many subcommittees, I'm thinking.
Yeah.
Magic meets at 10 a.m. on the first Tuesday of the month. MAPC, I have no idea what their time is.
Tuesday morning?
The Magic is Tuesday mornings.
That's a retaliant position.
Maybe we don't have a couple of members that retire.
I can do it, either one.
You want to do an alternate as well? Can we put an alternate in?
Can we?
Actually, no, yeah, sure.
So if you want to do it and I'll be an alternate for you.
We said we were going to do that, going.
Well, we can reach out to Tim too.
Yeah.
Good idea.
So that's for MAPC or Magic or both? Both, okay. Move that Select Board, oh, sorry.
Karen, did you say yes to both?
No, I did not say yes to both. I was like, wait a minute, what is happening here?
I almost had.
Which one do I want?
I got you, Karen.
I'll take, I'll take MAPC. See if Tim can do Magic.
Magic's four times a year, no, Magic's 10.
Magic's 10 times.
Or, yes, okay, so we'll point Karen to MAPC, we'll reach out to Tim on Magic, and if Tim won't, won't do it, I'll do it.
Move that the Select Board vote in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 4 to be Section 24, to appoint Karen Morrison as the town's representative to the Metropolitan Area Planning Council and replace the current member. Said appointment is for a three-year term from this date.
Second.
Move by Matthew, seconded by Gary, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 And we're going to hold off on the other one, right?
We can reach out, we'll, we'll reach out to Tim.
Thank you.
Or we could appoint you and amend it.
We could say you or your designee.
We'll reach out to Tim and do a steward at the next meeting. Okay.
Gone this long without them.
Yeah. Town meeting, Human Resources Director.
If I can, if I can just do a, do a slight introduction, this is something that Michelle, HR has been, has been working on and pretty, pretty aggressively and intensely. There's the amendments that are before you, that will be at town meeting. There's almost 400 amendments made to that in which organizing the, the language, consolidate different concepts, clarify roles, address current recruitment and retention needs, and the preparation of adoption of a new class and comp plan, so. Job well done, hard work, and take it away. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle Vibert, Human Resources Director, thank you for having me tonight. As Jim mentioned, the, this has been extensive work done in the Human Resources Department. I know a few of you have expressed the Select Board policies and procedures, and the goal is to go through all of the policies and procedures and see what is consistent and what is not. One of the items we started with was the Personnel Bylaw. And with that, I just wanted to explain what a Personnel Bylaw is versus an Employee Handbook, because we have two governing documents. So a Personnel Bylaw, just to give a brief introduction of it, is, it's really the legal framework. It's the overarching policy that governs not only the HR department, but it, it's how we interact with all other departments for our policies and procedures. And really, that's aimed at all of the decision-makers. This document cannot be changed outside of town meeting vote. Whereas the Employee Handbook more speaks to day-to-day operations, and that is more, really for employees, it encompasses anything from vacation language to longevity to, again, those day-to-day operations. That document, we do have the ability to change by the Select Board vote. Slide please. So just to give a brief history, in 2021, the town did a comprehensive review of the Personnel Bylaw. It was about an 80-page document. At that time, they decided to remove the Personnel Board, dissolve the Board, and create a Personnel Advisory Committee in place of that Board. Also, what occurred was the content from the Personnel Bylaw, we cut it down to about seven pages that were left over, which we'll talk about in a few minutes. And then a lot of that content that was cut out of that bylaw was moved to an Employee Handbook, which was created at that time. That Employee Handbook still exists today, and it encompasses, again, like I said before, our day-to-day policies, vacation language, longevity, it's sexual harassment policy, discrimination policies, all of those really intricate day-to-day policies and procedures. So let's take it to today, 2025. What we have done, as Jim stated earlier, is in doing a comprehensive review to this bylaw, we realized that there was a lot of language that was repetitive, there was a lot of concepts that were spoken to in one section, and then it would speak to it again in another section, so really going through and just consolidating those concepts, clarifying the roles of not only the Select Board and the Personnel Advisory Committee, but the Town Administrator as well, and the HR Director, but mainly the Personnel Advisory Committee. A lot of their role, at one point, I believe it's said in the bylaw, they approve, where they don't approve, they just advise on these topics. So that was something that we focused on. We do need to address current recruitment and retention needs. This is an effort that I've come in front of the Board before to speak about. There's many different ways to do it. There's a few concepts in here that do assist with this bullet point. And prepare for adoption of a new class and comp plan. At any point, you know, we do a review of our comp and class plan, and you need to be able to have flexibility to keep up with job market, internal equity, external equity, and everything that goes on. So you need to be prepared to make possible changes to those comp plans, whether that be changing steps, changing the way things are graded or classified. Next slide, please. So overall, I didn't want to review all 396 changes of the Board, so I gave you a highlight slide that really focuses on the big changes, the major substance of the edits. You know, the edits, all of them really clarify roles, go through the concepts that I just spoke about, but these ones are, are standout alone in particular. So one thing that the Select Board had done was approved the Personnel Advisory Committee to increase from three to five members. That was never reflected in the Personnel Bylaw itself, so that document does need to go to town meeting for that approval to correct the membership. We also included, there is a statement in there to address a potential conflict of interest. We mentioned that employees, current employees and immediate family of former employees should not be allowed to be a member on the Personnel Advisory Committee. This could cause a conflict of interest. It also could cause issues with open meeting law when anyone is potentially discussing items outside of, of a meeting. The next section, which was 33-9, which was a major highlight, and 33-11, both of these really hit home to really clarify language for mid-year and temporary increases or temporary compensation plan amendments. So this is really when we've come before the Board, we have an amended job description, we want to reclassify that position. This is really clarifying that process and how it does operate. 33-12 does speak to step increases. We added some new language, which does address recruitment and retention needs, giving a little bit more flexibility to meet those needs, to how we reclassify employees, where they land on the scale potentially, our current employees, and for new hires. In 33-15, we added some new language. Over the last several years, one of the major, you know, laws that we have to keep in compliance with is the Equal Pay Act. And basically, what we do is we have, anyone that is hired or reclassified in a new position, basically, we have to review what, there's a lot of laws, and just the basic gist of it is that we have to make sure that in comparable positions per the law, we're keeping up with, making sure we're in compliance with how that law states you can hire and state where their salary is at. And attracting and retaining talent, I spoke about before. And then there is a new provision to add about a personal rate provision. And just to give you an idea of what this is, if a position is reclassified, sometimes what happens is that incumbent may be at a max salary that the, the position gets, you know, regraded, and that max salary is lower than their current salary. We're not going to make them lose money, so we keep that incumbent at the salary they're at. They don't lose money, but they don't gain money either. And when that incumbent does leave that position or becomes vacant, the new person would come in at the, the current scale range. That is all I have for the Board.
I, I did have a question, it's like, I know, I, I help with this document, but I, I was just thinking, the PAC, the authority given to the Personal Advisory Committee, I thought came from the Select Board, not by vote of town, because it was an advisory. You saying that now there's going to be some authority that the Personal Advisory Committee has?
Over which, so.
So you're saying that's go to town meeting to change it from three to five members, when it's a board that the.
The bylaw. So the bylaw, so this is part of the issue, is that we find conflicting language in these two documents.
Yeah.
So the bylaw itself, any language in the bylaw can only be changed by a town meeting vote. The handbook can be changed by a Select Board vote. And so what happens is there's language in the bylaw that speaks to the number of members you can have on the PAC.
So why don't we take, to Gary's point, and why don't we take that out of the bylaw and make it a Select Board policy? So then it's something that the Select Board can change on their own without going to a town meeting vote?
Just because you want to have flex, I'm just saying, HR policy, and, you know, I could have said this before.
It's okay.
I know, I'm sorry, I just thought of it when we were sitting here, but, yeah, being able to address HR concerns within the year is so critical to retention and hiring, that having to wait to town meeting potentially to, I think we should, I think the vote at town meeting should be to remove that from the bylaw. It's, I don't think that was ever the intent. We, that's, that was why the Personnel Board went away, because that had a lot of authority that with it, we're, I think, we're just advising you, Jim, and the Select Board.
So we can do that. To speak to your point, I, I do want to mention to the Board that this is still a working document. I have sent it to council for review, they've sent back a few comments. This is why I'm taking it to the Board. We'll also be circulating it with staff for feedback like this.
That's real, I mean, I've looked at the rest, there's a lot in there.
Yeah, yeah, I, personally, I think we don't want any more in a bylaw than we have to have, because it really limits us.
Encodes us, yeah.
And it would be better to have it as a policy somewhere else that we could then change, so. I don't know what we legally have to have in the bylaw versus not, if there is anything, or if we can get rid of the bylaw altogether and just make it a policy, right? That would. You're nodding.
Well, I mean, it's, I mean, at some point, whether or not, you know, having Personnel Bylaws, you know, come from an earlier time, and, you know, I think that's one of the things that the Charter Committee is going to be looking at too, to do things more efficiently, because having it in a handbook, and, and having, say, the town manager or the Select Board have the right to make those changes is a much more flexible and probably more appropriate way to address.
Day-to-day.
Yeah, the day-to-day management of it, and as Michelle highlighted, there's a lot of complexities and things that we, we can, we can be lagging on. You know, pay equity, things of that nature that we probably should be getting on right away, but it's a little harder for us to do that if we're always waiting six months before the next town meeting, so.
So I, I mean, I, I think what we have in this document is good, generally, I mean, I need to go through it with a little more detail myself, but it's just a matter where it ends up, right? And I don't know if that's something we should be asking, like, the Charter Commission or Collin Center or something now before we go forward and make more work for the Charter Committee, right?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think this is being addressed right out of the gate for the Charter Committee.
No, but.
But, yeah, somewhere.
But we're just giving, if we're, we're updating this and then saying, okay.
One eighteen months, we could be changing again.
Right, so, so if we're, if it's something we're changing now that we say we potentially don't need, then why do we? then why do we leave it for something for them to look at?
Yeah.
Can I speak to that a little bit? So, the structure right now is an issue, right? So, when we come to which policy do we use if there is conflicting language, that can become a problem. And so, to wait that eighteen months, that would be extremely difficult.
I'm not suggesting we don't do anything for the next eighteen months. I'm suggesting maybe at town meeting, we revoke the bylaw altogether and make it a policy of the Select Board, right? Not leave it, you know, not leave it as something that's in limbo or out of whack, right? But, if we're going to be changing it, why do we want to change it now? And then, again, in just a few months, if there's a solution that we can reach now, that would be good long-term.
There is, by statute, some things that have to be in the bylaw. So, that's the other part that we have to pull out of there. If we wanted to go fully with policy, just policy.
I'm just throwing that out, is if that's the way we should be going, right? And put the minimum in and then move the rest to something else.
This goes to print... Well, it's already going to be on the warrant regardless. So, we have time, I guess, to review it and make you that idea, if that's something that can be done. I'm just trying to think if the authority of the Select Board, should that be all encompassing of all of these things? That's what I don't know. I haven't looked at the parts that... Because you're saying this entire personnel bylaw changes to a personnel policy, right?
I mean, maybe the bylaw says we have to have a Personnel Advisory Committee, right? But, it doesn't have to outline anything beyond that, right?
Right. It did say that, and that was because removing the Personnel Board was, it was a big deal, right, at that time? And there was a lot of people that didn't agree with it. So, I think the Personnel Advisory Committee, putting that into a bylaw, codified it, saying, "We will have help." You know, it won't just disappear. People are going to have a place where they can go. We can still do, help HR do different functions, classification and things. So, it needed to be in the bylaw, and maybe that piece stays. The creation of the Personnel Advisory Committee and the extension of making it five members. But, I think we really got to dig into it. That's something that no one's even mentioned, changing this to just policy. In other communities, have you seen?
No.
Yeah. The thing is too, Michelle can, you know, knowing, hearing this, maybe you could talk to town council about what our options might be and then report back to you. We're going to be talking about this again in the...
It might be a simple no. You can't do that.
Right, right. But, as you said, Gary, you probably do need to keep some components in. So, what Michelle's proposing is basically, within the parameters of what, of the model we currently have to, and this is what you have to do to make those changes. So, and when you're talking about something a little different than that, but we can do some research and...
Is this one of the things that was charged to the...
Yes, it will be with the Charter Review Committee?
Yeah.
Yes, yes. This is going to be one of the issues.
It might work itself out that way, too.
Yeah, but to Ryan and Michelle's point, it's a problem right now.
Right now, oh, we have to address a lot of this, because the duplicity of stuff is extremely confusing for new employees and staff and everybody.
Well, my impression was that the problem that is occurring right now goes beyond that.
Right.
So, I'm in favor of bringing this down to tape, you know, cutting this back to bare bones. If the Charter Commission wants to add, they can certainly recommend that. But, I think we need to, I think we need to focus on having a functional document.
With all the minimum requirements.
With the minimum requirements, exactly.
Yeah, I think some of the language in here was formally for equity purposes, because there is a fine line. The state obviously has some serious guidelines on how, when you hire somebody, just bringing them on and giving them step nine or... Well, what's to stop any Select Board from just doing that, you know, without even looking at all the other members on that team that have been here for 10, 15 years? There could be an issue there. So, you want to make sure that it's, I guess, as a policy, it would be.
I mean, if that's one of the bones that qualifies as bare bones, then, you know, so be it, yeah. I think maybe the approach would be rather than, you know, focusing on what needs to stay rather than what can come out, if that makes sense.
I'm just looking at, like, some of these, like, the Personnel Advisory Committee should immediately, quarterly, find, meet jointly with the Select Board and Finance Committee, at least annually. Well, I don't remember that really happening.
Right.
Are they going to issue a report? Are they going to meet with the Select Board by January 1st to discuss any changes in the comp plan for the forthcoming year? I don't think that's ever happened. So, those are things that are codifying in a bylaw, right?
Yeah. And the Finance Committee has a lot to do with that as well, with the comp plan.
So, are those things that should be in a bylaw, right? That's...
You're saying they should be in a policy? I mean, those seem more like policy things than bylaws.
Yeah.
So, in your time, when you were going through this, was there any mention of that, where it should fall? What was your driving factor of, was this goes to the bylaw? Is it, you use what already existed in the bylaw and cleaned it up? Or did you just say, this belongs to the bylaw, this belongs in the personnel policies of the Select Board?
Both, a little bit of both. So, there was mention of cleaning it up, and then what was there, and then the latter two.
I mean, this spells it out. A lot of the stuff that we, when we're talking about step increases and within grade stuff with employees, any Select Board could be all over the place with it, right? Where this kind of locks it in a little bit. This is how you would promote somebody. You would move them in here, and when they get promoted, they move up a couple steps. It's all defined in the book. But, my question is, does it have to be a bylaw? Or can that just be personnel policy? It doesn't affect the, I mean, we're going to have, this is going to be a warrant article. I think it's just on whether this really gets changed and pushed into personnel policy, and this part of the bylaw just goes away and becomes personnel policy? Or do we just keep it defined in these two locations? Whatever is simple, I mean, you said, it's more about efficiency.
I'm not, I mean, I'm kind of inclined not to upend everything at this point. I mean, Gary's point about having it at the whim of the Select Board is valid. And rather than having someone go through this again and decide which things to pull out into a policy and which not to, perhaps we should just move forward with this, which has been drafted and approved by town council as a bylaw. I understand the concerns, but also, is it, I'm not sure it's more efficient to move it to be a policy, to move some of it to be a policy.
Why not?
Well, because we would have to debate what, whether it's that, whether it's a better approach to move it to be a policy, given that it becomes something that the Select Board can change if they feel they need to, instead of having it be set by HR and town council.
I mean, it certainly helps with the recruitment side and retention things. Having flexibility has proven to be enormously important throughout the year and not completely restricted by a bylaw that says, "We're sorry. We can't hire you because we can't do this," or "we can't, we can't meet a salary," or "we can't." Especially in today's day and age, right? But, that's really speaking more towards what Mark said.
No, but, I mean, that's totally valid. And I guess I'm saying, you know, are we going to ask someone to go and review this again and decide which things to pull out?
I think we are.
Well, I mean, I think we go to town council, ask them what are the necessary components of a personnel bylaw? And from there, we can decide whether we want to add anything. To a certain extent, I think the conversation is a little premature, because we don't know what we're deciding between. We don't know what that minimalist approach looks like.
I guess your biggest concern here, when you were looking at this, was to clarify, make it easier for, well, a new, anyone new that comes in, new employees, but also HR to have clear direction as opposed to conflicting information. And I think that this solves that, for sure. It's cleaned up, so...
I mean, I'm not questioning what we've done here. I think it's much, it's very clear.
It is.
There's still a lot of things that are open, like promotion policies and things, right? So, I'm not sure if that's not in this bylaw, then it must be in some policy somewhere. So, if we already have a policy for those things somewhere, then why, what's the point of the redundancy between the two? What falls in the bylaw? What falls in the policy, right? That's more my question, and I would favor putting more things in policy rather than bylaw, just because they're easier to change.
More flexibility.
But, I do want to thank you for all the work you've done on this. I think it's...
It's a huge improvement.
It's much easier to read and clear, so...
And if we can get some more efficiency into it, for you, to make things easier.
Yeah, 33-45 does address promotion.
Which will make things easier for all of us.
Reclassification, new appointments, things like that, through promotion, transfer, demotions, or other actions.
33...
33-45. 33-15, sorry.
Did you notice that 33-16 was after it?
Yeah. So, what are you after tonight, I guess? That's why we're here.
Approved. No, this was just to give you an introduction to the warrant article, because it is a lot. So, I wanted the board to have the background for it.
And when do you, when this fall, when do we have to have final?
So, we're going to, our plan is to, we have a meeting two weeks from now. We may be doing it as a joint meeting with the Finance Committee, really going through, but at that point, we'll have, you know, a relatively fully fleshed-out draft that you'd be then approving, you know, then recommendation on the articles. And, but, you know, in the interim, again, we can get a little bit more information for you, whether we stick with what, you know, we currently have or, you know, get some other information about whether we wanted to, you know...
So, edits to this are really what goes to print, because we are going to have an article.
Yes.
Yes, alright. Get some more recommendations, I guess.
So, there is one thing that's different here in the by... So, I'm reading the pay upon appointment or reclassification. It says, "Select Board approval of a pay rate is required if it exceeds the midpoint of a position's pay rate, pay range now." It used to be step three.
Step three, yeah.
So, we're moving it to step five?
Yeah.
Or step six? Since there's an even number of steps, the midpoint is between five and six.
Anything beyond five was the idea there, the midpoint? Because now, you're getting into, like, the seniority, people that have been here.
So, people, so, appointing authorities can go up to step five now, instead of step four.
The town administrator, really, in most cases.
Well, it's whoever the appointing authority is, right?
Correct.
So, okay. It's just a change, and we're putting the authority in the bylaw, so, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle.
HR stuff.
37 Shattuck Street.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is something that the Select Board wanted to have a deeper discussion on. So, it has been, for as long as I've been here, and I know that the conversation happened years ago in regards to looking at this particular building to be deeply affordable senior rental housing. But, that desire has, was supported by a report, I believe, is approximately 10 years ago, that came out that identified two things that Littleton needed. One was a new senior center, and then the other was to have deeply affordable senior rental housing. So, in conversations, there have been, there have been a lot of conversations leading up to the upcoming groundbreaking as the development of 550 gets to, closer to fruition. And starting that process, there is the conversation. I know that the Planning Board had looked at the senior affordable housing component and the level of affordability for the entire project. And it has often been discussed with having this building as part of that development of affordable, of affordable housing. And the, and potentially, so, the developer and I had met a week ago today, as a matter of fact, that you are all aware of, and a conversation that had included previously to that requesting the phase one, that he would be, that a development of 300 units of 550. King Street would be at the, according to the ruling by Planning Board, that would be 80 to 120% AMI with, I believe, there's still so many units, a percentage of those units above that, above that 120% AMI that were high-market rate units. And then, you had your component of deeply affordable 30 to 60 AMI, then you had 80% affordable as a component. So, the team got their request from the developer to push the development of affordable housing, postpone that out of the first phase from those 300 units into a later phase. And that is something that we would not agree to. And we would not agree to that, because I think that the great expectation for one of the most important deliverables that can happen is the creation of affordable housing, as we all know the crisis is going on. And then, we expressed to the developer, if there is an opportunity to get more aggressive with the schedule for developing 37 Shattuck Street into the deeply affordable from a later phase, as we know, this project, it's going to be seven, eight years long of a different phase every single year, has that potential. But, to increase that, to get that more aggressive, to make it part of Phase One. And with that, you would look at having approximately 40 units, whether it's using the existing structure or demolish that structure. It has been confirmed that the Historical Commission would not put up a, would not prohibit that building from being knocked down to stop the important creation of the senior affordable, deeply affordable housing. And we are, so what we, in talking with town council, we have an internal team. We've got town planner, Ryan. We also have town council as the internal working team. And we have an outside consultant by the name of Judy Barrett, in which Vice Chairwoman Morrison helped us interview two candidates to take on the role of messaging, coordinating, having input in regards to a creation of affordable housing. And Ms. Barrett, with her experience and her deep knowledge of senior affordable housing, low-income housing tax credits and projects of that, we unanimously selected Ms. Barrett. And we continue through the process. And last Thursday, had a Zoom meeting with certain members on the, on the chairpersons of certain boards and committees. And that would consist of the Select Board, the Planning Board, the Affordable Housing Trust, the Council on Aging, and...
Finance.
Planning Board? Did I say Planning Board?
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee, thank you. And of which, there was a good conversation, a lot of questions. I did forward a list of deliverables that we are preparing as we get closer to town meeting. That would include an appraisal report, an engineering plan, which shows the lot lines for this, the cost of moving to a temporary location. for this, the cost of moving to a temporary location, the potential cost of annual rent for that location, and also looking at the, our final destination of a permanent location and what that would be financially. And that will be a working meeting as we will go, make this conversation with the Finance Committee tomorrow, tomorrow, at tomorrow evening's meeting. I had the conversation with the Council on Aging today and updated them in a, in a more detailed way, let everyone ask questions. I am scheduled to go to the Planning Board on Thursday and to Affordable Housing Trust on March 19th to answer any questions that they may have and talk in, in greater detail. And it's an opportunity, and I know, and I know that it's, it's a little, it's a little fast, not expecting this to come along fast, but we saw, you know, the opportunity that affordable units need to be, need to be done. We know that it has been a, a great need for the deeply affordable ones, and here is the opportunity of helping us get to there. One of the things that I know that all of this is going to be done through town council would be drafting, is, would be drafting the RFP to move forward after its declared surplus, thinking optimistically in, in May, and we can then move forward with trying to create the opportunity for this to be developed for senior affordable housing.
We've done this in the past. We did this, we got three bids on this exact.
No, there weren't bids, they were just proposals.
Oh, wasn't, just R5s, right?
Alright, so this will give us the
So there, I mean, the, yeah, I mean, I remember looking at those, and it was definitely feasible, could be done. But go ahead, continue.
So though, so it's, and, and then there was a, you know, a deeper conversation about exactly, I mean, is it 40 units or is it more? And clearly, if the, if there's no historical significance of the building, there is not going to be any, any prohibiting of that by historical commission to, to raise the structure, you can maximize lot lines and potentially look at that of the parcel being subdivided so you can have multiple, you could have two projects next to each other, whether one is the deeply affordable of those 40, and then another 20 to 40 affordable, or go for another 20 to 40 of deeply affordable. But you have that option, and
We have that option as the developer?
The developer would have that option. And any developer that would, that would be awarded, the, the project would absolutely have to have the experience of, if not the direct experience, then partnering with a affordable, a nonprofit affordable housing developer with clearly a successful track record that has worked with low income housing tax credits. The application for low income housing tax credits, and I have been involved in one of these in community, other communities, it's a three-ring binder, and it's literally this thick and extremely intensive. And they look to a partner, so the, the state would, would be a partner along with the developer, and they would look for a local, a local affordable housing trust to also be a partner and make an investment in it. Not a, not a, not a huge investment, but just having, be part of the, of the partnership with the town. And it's some, I, we think it's, it's an exciting project, and it's, and so much could, could really, can take off from, from this, and the, the development of 550 King Street is very exciting, and there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of super things that would potentially go on there, but the topic right now, I'm sorry if I'm digressing, is the priority of, it's been identified, the need to create senior affordable housing, and we have that opportunity now to, to capitalize on that.
Has anyone talked to Nick?
Nick Lawler?
Yeah.
Yes.
And he's signed off on the ability to do this because there's not the sewer capacity, right? Where's the sewer capacity for?
I can't have, I don't have that answer right now, but it's a fair question.
We need to get them to sign off that this can be done or when it could be done.
But, and that's, but good point, and that's been a, a conversation, part of the conversation that I was having last Monday, and that I filled the team in on when I had the conversation with the owner of 550, just in capacity in general. So identifying another parcel for that capacity as, just to let everyone know, as you know, Congresswoman Trahan has a little over a million dollars for earmark for us to help us purchase a piece of property for that. But that's held in committee and with the new administration. But I have a regular conversation with Nick on identifying another site, and they have, they are evaluating a site now.
You're talking a 20 RPU's at minimum there, right? For 40 units? It's like a half RPU each?
For one bedroom, probably.
Yeah, so 20 RPU.
But I mean, it's not necessarily going to increase the count of units at 550, although it could if we, if we go with the plan that does more than 40 units. But my understanding would be if he's using that building for 40 units, they would supplant 40 affordable units that would have gone into 550.
I don't think his, I don't think he has an agreement that he can put any of his units off-site.
Sure, but I'm saying, no, but, but, okay, that's fine, but I'm saying, from a capacity perspective, it doesn't change anything. Like, he's not adding more, more capacity than he already, than he already has signed up for.
It would.
No, he does. Because, because the, his, I believe his special permit allowed him to do the 40 deeply affordable units off-site.
Correct.
Already, there was no requirement that they had to be onsite.
No, I, I'm saying, and so his permit must include those
No, it doesn't.
For the sewer.
No, it doesn't.
Oh, okay.
We're talking about a developer exists, but if you're going to put an RFP, you, you can get two, three, four, five other developers that have potentially a better plan for this.
Sure. They could potentially, you know, absolutely. And, and town council, Jenny and Tom are part of the process that, absolutely, 100%. They have, they have expressed that same thing.
And I guess that's, that's the concern, and that's the open, we have to be open like that, but the concern is, if that happens, it puts us in a different, a tougher situation. I mean.
So, so I, I see where you're, I mean, I think I have some deep concerns about, you know, how's the town going to spend money on town hall? Like, we're, we're rushing to get this surplus, but we don't have three or four steps down the road to replace that building and all the infrastructure that we need.
Well, that's part, and that's part of the conversation that's going to be in and start in greater detail tomorrow night and continue with, with finding, with FinCon, because once we're able to identify the approximate cost it would be to forever, for, for, for permanent location, then, then it's a working document with, with the Finance Committee because it is our, it is our intent to, not to go to the taxpayer to pay for that. It is intent for that to fall with, with an unleaded, and that's going to be a matter of timing of when that could be. So that temporary space could be two years, three years, five years, we don't know. And I'm not going to speculate what it is because we, we don't, we haven't finished getting all the numbers together.
If, if it's five years, you know, I would worry that the, the location that we select and the money we allocate for that isn't available in five years because something else happens in the meantime, and now we're stuck renting for town hall with no place to go, right? So I'm just saying, like, we need to have all our ducks in a row before we start this process. That, that's my concern.
No, and that's, and that would be part of shaping the draft RFP, and we will identify all of these obstacles and, and working with the team and, and really looking at trying to have a reasonable solution to move forward with a comfort level.
I mean, can you RFP without declaring the property excess?
No, you have to declare it surplus and get permission to sell it essentially at town meeting.
That's like the safety brake.
Well, that's, that's exactly what we, we had to do with the orchard, so.
Mm-hmm.
So we can't issue an RFP unless we have that permission.
Which is why we did an R5.
So there's a lot of, what, this is going to be, the plan is for this to be in the May town meeting.
Yes, sir.
Right, which the book's basically going to print in two-ish weeks' time. What information will we have available to put in the book, and what are we planning on handing out at the fore?
We are, the team is working that out to make sure that we have the necessary information readily available in time for town meeting, if not sooner.
What I'm saying is, if it's not in the book, people are going to have a hard time with it.
Yeah. What, um, talk to me about when we declare property of excess.
Surplus.
So if I keep saying it, it's excess, never excess. Surplus, what's, how do you put that back in the bag? But this whole thing fell apart, and we couldn't, we cannot find a location that makes sense. We cannot, we need to
We, we're not obligated to do anything.
It can be surplus perpetuity, yeah.
But I mean, you could put it back into, you take it out of surplus if you had to later on. I mean, I don't know if that's ever happened. I'm just, I, my worry, I'm just trying to find protections for us if, so many things go sideways, sewer.
We can declare it, but it's, we don't have to act on it. If it, if it falls apart, we just don't have to act on it. But it's, you know, it would still, it would still be, we would have gone through that process of
But the town, let's say that it fell apart, can the town rescind the surplus? Or just the select board has the right infopetuity?
I think it's check set, you can have the building for surplus forever if you wanted to rescind it.
Right, right, I understand. No, 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 that's
We don't know. We don't know that exact answer, which, which way.
So if, yeah, okay, so we could, you know, if the town, let's just say they declared the orchard surplus, and we didn't find anyone we liked, we could in 10 years go and sell the orchard, and the town wouldn't be able to stop us, right? Because they've already declared a surplus. So that's, to your point here on this, once it's surplus, it's, is there a way to unsurpluse it?
That's where I was going, yeah. That's all, I
Well, I'm sure it'd have to be another town meeting, but I don't know how that would work legally either.
What's the struggle?
I, just, the, the time, the timeline. I guess, I guess there's no danger in making it surplus. We still have control of it, right up to the point where we, right?
The select board has control of it.
Right.
The town no longer has control of it.
So it's, what's our comfort level to pull the trigger on the next step? Looking at the, you know, the RFP, which one rises to the top and then saying, okay, let's
Well, based upon the, based upon the criteria that's set forth in the RFP, you, you, you judge it according to not advantageous, advantageous, highly advantageous.
Right.
And that's, and the best, the best, and the, the goal here is to create, what we need to do is create the senior affordable housing. So now's as good a time as any. We've got the, the building next door, that, that will be finished.
No, I, I agree, I just, it's the cost analysis of it too, which I like having, I'd like having that in front of me because it's, okay, the cost of, we have to move out.
Yep.
And now you're talking, you mean LCTV? I mean, that's a whole nother part of this
Yep.
Complex space.
IT.
And then, let alone the town clerk's office, it's with all the weight parameters and structural stuff, but
Right, and the safes.
Saves and stuff.
Yep.
So it's that cost also, building out somewhere where we're going to rent, how much does that cost us?
Yep.
Versus what the heck does it cost to renovate this entire, that entire building? But we saw it when the library was going in, because there was a conversation, and I know it was like 16 million at that time, so it was
It's probably more now. To renovate 37 Shattuck Town Hall?
Yeah.
But that wouldn't be our cost, right?
That was, that was just for the library component.
Right.
But to, to renovate it, for what use?
When are we doing, when are we doing the feasibility?
When are we doing the deeply affordable senior housing? Where do we do that?
Well, when we're saying that the deeply affordable, where, you're saying that we do not have to do that part, that's, our developers have to do their deeply affordable housing.
Absolutely. But, you know, here we, here we are, we have the opportunity to, to increase the, you know, the aggressiveness and get it done.
Oh, no, absolutely, the location is amazing
Right.
For the senior center. I, I, it's just, it's the financial piece to it that I would like to see
100%.
Where does this rental?
At least the back of the envelope.
What's the average rental price that we would need? You know how much space we need already, correct?
Right.
So
Right.
What does that look like? I mean, I remember when we did it with the fire department, you did it, you guys, right?
Um
And I don't know what that cost was.
But, but even, even that, you know, let's say we know how much it costs to rent, but what, how do we get out of the rent into a real building? Like, the RFP is just a little tiny part that happens right after we declare it surplus and move out, but there are four more steps down the road to get us into a new town hall that, right?
Right, but it's like, it's like the financial planning we're doing for, for Shekel Lane. I, you know, we, we've identified, it's the fact that, okay, we put so much money in, into, into the, into the account, the stabilization account, then we'll be able to reduce that, that debt. Okay, so it's financial planning. Is, so we will be able to say, the back of the envelope says it's going to be X amount of a million dollars, so it's going to take us five years to get there with this process. Meanwhile, we have the 550 King Street, which, if we, if we want to, you've got a development schedule for, for commercial, for commercial and for residential there. You have different independent pads that, properties that, in the conversations with Mr. Lapoli and his team, I cannot, I can't share the, the anchors that are there are quite impressive, one of which is a boot, a high-end boutique hotel
Right.
That, which I knew you knew, but now they've
So there's a big difference between this and the other projects. So if we look at like the fire station, the library, the senior center, right? And, and this project, when we did them, we, we were doing it with a known cost, right? We had to go to town meeting and say, we want to borrow money for this building, and we know how much it's going to cost. This one, you're asking us to declare something surplus that we can then act on to commit the town to potential future cost that they haven't yet approved.
We have to go back to town meeting to get approval for
Right, we, we're going to have to go back to town meeting to get approval for any, for a new town hall.
For appropriation.
When we no longer have a town hall, right?
You, you do have a town hall.
We have a temporary rented space, right?
Well, it's, it's still declared as a town hall.
Right.
So you're giving up a town hall to move to something temporary without a definitive plan to move
There are some municipalities that are in rented space, and it's not unprecedented.
So what's the, so once the authority ships over, I mean, you, we keep saying deeply affordable housing, what's that, who's the control net? We lose control at that point.
No, no, the RFP would, would state specifically what, like, what the management company would charge, and it would be in the deed and
And then planning take, planning
That would all be, that would all be set out and irrevocable.
Okay. All right, well, that's the comfort level.
And the deed restricted.
Well, then it's
Right, but we know when you get into 60, 80 AMI, it's not really
30 to 60, yeah.
Right, it's not really affordable at that point. Starts getting up.
30 to, I mean, it's 30 to 60.
That is, certainly.
And that's what, that's what 37 Shattuck Street will be, is 30 to 60 AMI. And, I mean, there's a lot of, there's, there continues to be a lot of moving parts, I, I understand that, but we are working hard of trying to fulfill that, and as a matter of fact, one of the things that Chairman Rambach had requested during that meeting on Thursday, he wanted, he wanted a list of deliverables, which I emailed to everyone this evening. And the Select Board was on that as a whole, as a whole body. An appraisal of, of 37 Shattuck Street, engineering plan depicting the lot lines for, for 37 Shattuck.
And parking, we don't want to interfere with.
And that's, and there's, there's ways to, you know, to identify the parking and how the, with new construction, whether it's, you park underneath, and not like sub-ground, but ground level. I mean, there's, there's a number of different ways to, to identify that. The cost to move to temporary space, then the potential monthly cost that would come out of the, that would come out of the general operating budget for the temporary location, square footage and cost to build on a permanent location, and the timeframe that we can potentially absorb the, the cost for permanent space under the levy. And one thing that I did forget to put in here was Plan B. If it's no.
Yeah, well, and the, I mean, convincing the Finance Committee on the, the under the levy piece, whatever that number looks like, right?
Yeah. Well, I mean, Well, I mean, absolutely. And this is, I mean, it, whether it's, it's now or, or later on down the road, I think we're, we'd still be looking for the, for the same answers. We'd still be in the same situation of issuing the RFP to identify, uh, to identify a potential, you know, a long-term permanent home. And we would be doing cost estimates based on the same as we're doing now.
Well, my quest, my immediate quest, that's why I asked, because my concern was that why not November? You know, gives us some, but that was kind of answered with the, you have to, you can't put out an RFP unless we already declare it excess, so.
Right. A surplus.
Stop correcting them.
Yeah, just, can we just change the language in the?
We'll just, you know, we'll just change the master of law. I know a lot of moving parts.
I hate giving away land.
It's, uh, it's, but not when you get something in return.
No, that's the key with the, but it's unknown.
And just, if I can just request the, the select board, we, you know, the, the team hears you loud and clear and just gives, give us the opportunity to, um, to get the information and, uh, and see how we can best make it, make it work.
I mean, I'm comfortable with your list that you created or that you guys.
That's, yeah.
Plus sign off by.
If we get answers.
LWD.
In that piece.
Okay, great point. And I'll, Nick is going to be in finance committee tomorrow and I'll talk to him tomorrow morning. So, um, but I appreciate all the questions and the concerns. It only makes our, our ability to be prepared better. Thank you. To in naming the, naming the property excess.
Moving on.
So, uh, next item is to provide an update on the annual town meeting and, uh, whether to vote to add articles to the town meeting warrant. So if I could start from this list, this is in the packet. The highlighted items are items that have changed or have been added, uh, from your last meeting on February 24th. Item number three, which is highlighted, basically gives, uh, gives the town permission for NFY 25, to make transfers at the year, at year end, to make up for any shortfalls. It's, it's really administrative in nature, but gives us the, um, permission to do that. Article 12 is, um, let's get the thing this up, is an article to, um, to reallocate prior articles funded through free cash to support funding of the town of Littleton's portion of the Littleton Common Sewer System Betterment. You may recall when, I think it was our second meeting in December, where we had talked about a plan to use our ARPA funds and how we would reallocate all of that. These, uh, what this is, is really just a reaffirmation of that, but we need to be able to take money that we had allocated to other uses to then allow us to then reallocate it to the betterment. So it's just basically following up on that. This also includes Article 13, which is to allocate interest generated through ARPA, for the ARPA program, also toward our town's sewer betterment. So really, these are all, it's all part of that same plan, but this is basically following through on that and, and making those changes for town meeting.
That couldn't be one, 12 and 13 couldn't be one article?
Potentially, potentially. I think these are conversations to, I've, uh, I've shared this list with the town moderator. Ultimately, it's really up to the town moderator and, and town council as to what, we, we think we might be able to do some of that.
I'm just goal setting for you guys.
Oh, no, no, I, I want your articles. I mean, I, I'm still, I'm still suffering from Karen Zeevillai from the last one, the last meeting about how many of the.
Well, it was 30 last meeting. That was 35.
Yeah, so, yeah, the idea is to try, where, where we can consolidate, we will try to. So, um, Article 14, um, was, uh, this is a request from the treasure collector's office to allow for the, um, you know, sewer betterment. We, we basically have people on different payback periods in the sewer betterment, but our loan is one period. So this is somewhat technical in nature, but we need to get, uh, approval to allow for, um, essentially the fact that people will be making paybacks at different, paying back at different periods. And what everybody will be, some people will be paying back all upfront, some people will be paying back over 10 years and over 30, right?
That's a finance nightmare.
Yeah, so this just basically gives us permission to do that. Uh, item 15 is an item that was relatively new where, and this came up in my conversation with the board of assessors, well, our town assessor, where, um, there was a A and R for development behind, um, the cemetery and.
Article 14, right?
Uh, what's that?
Article 14.
Uh, yeah, I'm sorry, yes, Article 14, thank you. Well, no wait, no, 15, sorry.
Our list is different.
Oh, okay, well, yeah, actually, let's use this list then. I think this is, this may have, may have been updated, uh, because there's always.
Oh, I see, you're stuck in three.
So, um, so basically, uh, there was a, uh, A and R plan for development that happened behind the cemetery and there was a parcel within that that expressed their intention to give it to the cemetery commission. That has yet to actually happen, so, and the town has to, well, the cemetery commission has to first express its desire to accept this piece of property. And then, uh, then from that, once we have that recommendation from the cemetery commission, it would be coming back to.
How big is it?
To accept it. I think it's like about two acres. A lot of it is, is upon, on, on it, um, so.
That's a good size for us.
Yeah, yeah, so, but there may be a capacity to, um, yeah, it, well, if, if the cemetery owns it to really incorporate it into their overall envelope. And so we, we think it'd be a good thing to own, but we just need permission on that. And, uh, item 16 here is, uh, this was from Steve Yonley. If you remember, um, I think we did a, a few, is it not at the last town meeting? Maybe it was actually the last town meeting. We had right-of-way takings, um, up near.
Foster Street.
Foster Street, thank you, um, right near the train station. So this is right-of-way takings on Russell Street. So, uh, Steve's, you know, working with Steve on this and trying to find the right language and.
This for expansion, new sidewalks and all the.
Right, right, so, um, exactly, so. Uh, and everything else that, um, these are, they're again, the highlighted ones are the new ones that you have not seen, but wanted to give you a quick, uh, highlight of that. So, uh, we're in the process of working on drafting these articles, so we're working with town council as well as, um, the parties for whom we have specific responsibilities. So Russell Street, that's Steve Yonley, working with Steve, working with town council to get the right language for that. Maran has the two planning articles, which just to remind you, the two, um, planning board articles are zoning bylaw amendments to, um, as it relates to adult-use marijuana establishments and amending the wetlands floodplain. So they, they intend and would like to come, um, at the meeting on the 24th to present both articles to you, even though the board might not necessarily be taking a formal position on it, they ought to courtesy, wanted to come in and provide that presentation to you. And of course, um, the other pieces that Michelle touched on, which are personnel-related, the first being changes to the personnel bylaw, which she talked about earlier tonight, as well as, uh, our general change, which is Article 17 here in the list before you, which is the update to the compensation grid and all of the, uh, components within that. So there's a lot of work to be able to, to get to this piece, but, place, but, um, and again, we're working with town council on draft and once we have something that we feel comfortable in sharing, we'll get that back to you. So our goal on the 24th is to propose that it would be a joint meeting with the finance committee. At that meeting, again, the planning board would like to come and present, uh, what is now and will change probably, Articles 35 and 36, uh, so, um, they would be making that presentation. And, uh, some of the feedback, um, from the board, which you do not have to get back to me tonight on, but things that maybe you're seeing here that you'd also like to see further information on. Article 34, say for example, is, uh, the care and control of Lot 107A. So that was a request of the conservation commission, you've seen.
Yeah, we have.
That was at the last town meeting, we, we, we pulled that at last minute there. And, uh, so we, um, you know, so that's, uh, that's still here. And, um, you know, so, and I know Chase came and made that presentation, so, um, I, I think we're in a good place with that. I can't remember if there was anything else outstanding that you wanted to see as it relates to that article.
They covered all the.
Well, they were still working out the plan with the water department, I thought.
They still, as I understand, they're having that conversation, so, um, you know, whether that would change the article and, and what that would be, I think that's something we'll follow up on. But, um, it, it, at least in terms of, you know, where things are at, you have heard about that and you know what that is. Article 32, Jim talked about earlier, the authorization of surplus town hall. So, um, a lot of these you've seen and are familiar with, so, but I would encourage you to, um, look at the list again. If you have questions, please reach out to me and Jim. And, um, again, we've, we've got a lot of work to do to actually flesh these things out, but this is at a higher level what we're looking to do. So in the meeting on the 24th, uh, the things that the select board would be asked to do, uh, first is article order. I know the board has had some opinions about where you want things to be. It does, you know, it's a very important thing as it relates to pacing a town meeting and what you want to see. So I know in the past, the past cycle, you, that the board has really wanted to change things around and make, you know, which is absolutely fine, so think about that, what you, uh, you know, how you would want to.
Well, you gotta get, it's really getting the pulse of what we think is the hot button, articles, get them upfront.
And that might be, you know, we, we may be taking that perspective, I, we can, we can, we can do that.
I mean, a 35, 36 article might, you don't want a very complex article to go at 36. I mean, people waiting for it, you know, if it has something to do with NAGO, for instance.
Very fair point.
I'd even recommend like.
We can talk.
34, the, the some that I think we could put off to the fall are, you know, even, even if it was the, the surplus, I, I think there's some that we could, uh, maybe not.
Well, you know, that's the, and so just for the things to vote on would be the order, whether or not you wanted to remove any of the articles, because this is our proposed list of what we have. And then, and then finally, uh, making recommendations on the articles. So sort of like what you did last time, where you were meeting jointly with the FinCom and you say, okay, we just reviewed Article 7. Okay, we hear a board recommendation on that, yeah, you know, and then same thing, FinCom, you get it done at one time. And you're both hearing the same things, which I think has worked pretty efficiently for us. So that's a charge on the 24th, so.
We haven't got any petition articles, have we?
No petition articles, yeah.
So I, I think the Sheikah Street Committee isn't going to have the bylaw ready, if my understanding is correct.
Is that, is that right?
That was, I believe that's true, but.
Yeah, I'm looking that way.
Okay.
And I don't, Matthew, I don't think we're having any, we want any articles for the orchard except the revolving fund.
At this point, no.
So that one can.
So I think.
Well, then the excess land, so that's the only other article we have. Regarding the orchard, I guess. The lower lot.
Yeah, well, it's the conservation then, yeah. So 22 and 23, I think go away. How long do we leave the police union on there for?
Uh, that's next meeting, we're going to have an executive session.
Executive session next meeting.
Right. Put that on the tickler, so we'll have that.
And then we decide whether to keep it on or not at that meeting or, I, I mean.
Probably.
Yep.
Probably, yeah.
Okay.
Right, um, and, uh, do we, and I'm trying to remember where we, where we put these, um, revolving funds for the orchard. Yeah, that's.
That's 24.
Yeah. So we, you know, Matthew had spoken earlier about the receipt of, of, of the, you know, from revenue from the rent that would go there and then, you know, for the inspection, say, how do you pay for the inspection? You pay for it out of that. Although I will say, anything we take in, Matthew, for taxes, that would.
Of course, yeah.
Right, so, um, yeah, so basically, that's, this is the list that we're looking at. You've, uh, the 24th really becomes a key meeting and I want to be able to try to provide at least a, a more, well, a fleshed-out sense of what those articles would look like. But there's a lot of pieces in here that really aren't, you know, um, you know, are really, uh, evergreen articles that continue to come back every, every year. So, um, you know, there's some new ones establishing revolving funds, especially where we have a new, um, uh, new center on Shattuck Street building, um, so we may be able to combine that into one article. It's relatively non-controversial. Sure, be, this is, this list has been sent to, um, the town moderator and the finance committee chair, so they've seen this, they'll have a, they'll have a good sense about what's, what's coming as well for them, so.
So the tax, the orchard tax from a lessee cannot go into.
It has to go to the general fund. Tax has to go, tax revenue has to go to general.
Even if it's a lessee.
What we could do is have a budget item for the orchard that basically was.
Same, but it has to be an annual, we'd have to add it every year. We couldn't make it a revolving fund.
Yeah.
The more money we can put in that, the better, so we're never in a situation like we were. I mean, it'd be worth it, I mean, that's easy to explain to the population, the town, too.
Yeah, we'll be able to do other things at the meeting. You know, we talked about collective bargaining, like we probably have a better sense than also those prior years, which we might just carry and hold an item, who knows? I'd hate to, I'd hate to take it out, find a bill that we could do before, which has happened. So, um, you know, it, it looks, um, it, it looks daunting, but it's actually, you know, fairly, you know, we're, we're, this is actually not that bad compared, you know, in terms of what we have to do. And, you know, with the use of the consent agenda, which thankfully is, is a huge advantage for us. You're working with the town moderator and that, that'll help us a lot. You know, like you take, for example, you know, like Article 11, adding funds back into the special injury leave indemnity fund. We've had to hit that fund a little bit, uh, and, and so as such, the total fund has gone down. And so what does it mean, propose just to bring it back to its prior level? Fairly simple, more administrative in nature, but, um, so, you know, something like that might, you know, reach to the consent agenda as well. So, um, and, and then, you know, I think too, if the board, if you, if what you're saying is you want to bring, you know, we bring the more controversial items to the front, I think that worked pretty well.
I'm just, I'm just thinking of residents that, um, sure, the consent agenda is a consent agenda, I knock it out a lot, but I think then the very next ones should be the ones that.
Yeah, no, that, that.
We have to figure, we get that just talking to our neighbors, what, you know, I have daycare, what's, you know, what are the important, and they're all important to us, but.
You know, I would say that was something that the board was really strong on the last annual and I think that worked well because it really kind of hit a lot of things right at the top that, you know, we were able to, um, to focus on, so, and, and just address it right in the front.
This, about the orchard, so we talked about the tax, he'll be taxed. Something I didn't, I don't know if was in the, the lease or not, did we discuss the schedule, obviously, for assessed value goes changes over the next 20 years or, so that's, so it won't always be 8,000, whatever, it could.
No, but I mean, it's, he has to pay the tax.
Is that understood? I just want to make sure if we put a solid number there, though.
Well, we, we have estimated from last year in the, as an example, in the lease, and he's, he understands he'll have to pay the property tax on that.
And, and the individual would prospectively be getting a discount because it is under agricultural reservations. So that was all conscious about that effort, about wanting to.
I could tell just by the number that it was.
Kathy said that it was at the very lowest rate that it could be.
And that's, and that's the intent, and that's the intent, because the uses are the favorable use, so. So pretty much that's where we are. I would, I would say in terms of the budget, um, you know, we're, we're, you know, we've gone through with the team. We met Friday morning with Jim and the finance team to go over where we were. So I think, uh, we're, um, we're close to presenting something on that. There've been some, you know, some adds with, as we mentioned earlier, the 19.9% healthcare, which is unfortunate news. But, you know, we've, we've counted that with some other changes and other updates. We, you know, have every confidence we'll be able to present a balanced budget. And, um, you know, we, uh, you know, we, we, you know, we feel like that's in a, that's in a good place, so. So if the board doesn't have any other questions, we'll just prepare for the 24th. Again, pose it as a joint meeting with the FinCom. And, um, you know, again, if you see something and hear that you have questions about or, um, you know, just please, please reach out, um, so we can, we can discuss.
So if it's a joint meeting, we're going to do it here and not over in 103?
That's, that, that's probably because we need the extra real estate to make that happen. I think that might be better if it's okay with you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do we need a motion to add these new articles?
Um, I, I. Um, I, I, I think you're, I think you could probably, we, we'll probably do everything together on the 24th. I say, because it might be some other things that then drop off. I appreciate that, though, Matthew. I think we can do, we can add, you know, add them, um, discuss the order, remove anything that needs to be done, and then, of course, make the recommendations. And, and again, I like the, I think what's worked well, and please correct me, but I think having the finance committee here and then both parties hearing the same information.
Yeah.
I can, I can tell, tell you from my conversations with the, the chair, he's, he's been appreciative of that, too. It's been a pretty efficient way to do things, um, so he, he likes that model as well.
And just for clarity, you're going to try and combine the EHS revolving fund articles into one?
Um, maybe, I gotta, I have to, I have to check to see whether or not, you know, because the, the risk is if you have, if someone, if there's three, if there's three revolving funds and for whatever reason, town meeting doesn't like one, does that kill the whole article? So, and then thus the counter would...
Amendment.
Yeah, the, the counter would be potentially, you, you know, you just put it all in consent and approve it, because I, I don't think that would be a really controversial thing, too, so, anyway. So that's, that's where things stand for the May 6th annual town meeting.
Thank you.
That's the biggest I've seen, if it stays like that.
Yeah, 36?
Yeah, I don't know.
You want to add a few more?
No, it's got two nights written all over it. I've never seen it two nights, but...
And again, Gary, remember, three of them are for adding revolving funds, three or four revolving funds, so...
Just, it's crazy what's happened to all the business.
Minutes.
I'm good.
Yeah.
Move the select board vote to approve the meeting minutes from the joint select board meeting with FinCom on February 1st, 2025, and the select board meetings on February 3rd, 2025, and February 24th, 2025.
Second.
By Matthew, second by Karen, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Moved by Matthew, seconded by Gary, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, see everyone on the 24th.
Good night, Littleton.